Not quite.
Well, call to order the Tuesday, May 20th, 2025, East Lansing City Council Discussion Only Meeting. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Altman, Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Singh.
Here.
Mayor Brook over.
Here. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So moved.
Moved by Meadows, seconded by Watson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Communication from the audience, I have, I think, four blue slips. Scott Spooner.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Spooner. I live in Glen Karen, lucky enough to live right behind this beautiful building. I've been kind of alarmed lately about the talk about the, how it's called calming of the traffic conditions by Glen Karen Elementary School. I have two children attending that school currently, and it seems to me that there's a lot of care and caution that has been discussed about motorists and motorist vehicles. There's been a lot of care and talk about getting up a hill that might be slippery in the winter. There's been talk about drainage issues for a crosswalk or a speed bump, a speed bump similar to old white hills. When you drive, when we take our kids to Patriarch Park, we cut, and yeah, you hit them and you slow down because that's what they do. Where's the care and caution for our kids? They don't have a choice. They have to cross that road right there. We built this beautiful school on that side of the road, and we all live on the other side of the road. Well, I should say some of us. I would really like to see more care and caution brought for our children than motorists and their vehicles who have options. They can go down to a different road. They can take a different path. They don't have to cut through. Our kids, again, they don't, and really, they have no choice. If we live where we live, we have to cross Harrison. And I guess the point I make is I would like to hear more thoughtfulness, care, caution, concern over their lives instead of a motorist's vehicle. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Patrick Rose.
Good evening. Thank you for all the work you do for the city. My name is Patrick Rose, 310 Oxford Road. I'm here tonight to ask council to broaden the definition in ordinance 1545 of functional families who the city now declares to be illegal occupants. The city also excludes many biological relationships, both in ordinance 1545 and in the current law, that are protected by the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, as made clear in the U.S. Supreme Court decision in Moore versus City of East Cleveland. There is a very good model to fix the problem we have in the ordinance. It's in the constitutional definition of family forged out of three sets of lawsuits. The Delta Township Ordinance, rewritten after the Supreme Court decided, which you have in your packet. The Ann Arbor Ordinance forged out of litigation applying Denoful, which you also have in your packet. And a quite different ordinance in the Mount Pleasant situation, which you have quoted in an email I sent you, and you also have the exact language in your packet. All three solve the problem. They're tested. They've been on the books for decades. Two are in college towns. Our lawyer committee drafted language which defines family coming straight out of Denoful, and I want to read it to you. One, family means one person or two related persons or two unrelated persons residing in a dwelling unit, or where there are more than two persons residing in a dwelling unit. Persons classified constituting a family shall include persons related by blood or by marriage, including, this is the key language, all biological relatives, and children, but not limited to stepchildren, foster children, wards of illegal guardian, and legally adopted children, or any combination of the above persons living together in a single dwelling unit. This fixes the problem of violating Moore versus East Cleveland. The great-grandmother, the great-aunt, the half-sibling, they're all excluded under our current ordinance. This fixes that. Number two, we ask that you include the following language for functional family, striking domestic unit. Quote, "Functional family shall mean a collective number of individuals living together in one dwelling unit who define their relationship as having a distinct domestic character or a demonstrable and recognizable bond, and whose members share responsibility for the household's needs while living together as a household or a single housekeeping unit." That solves the Denoful problem. We leave in the exclusions that exclude students in seasonal and temporary and group houses, perfectly constitutional. As the Court of Appeals showed you in Stegman, and I've given you the language in the decision, it is just simply false to say you cannot keep students in group houses out of family neighborhoods, and that you have to somehow sacrifice the rights of families to reach that goal. The reason that we're asking you to offer this amendment is you have four fatal defects in ordinance 1545. Number one, it excludes all non-traditional functional families. It does so categorically by language. We'll win on emotion. It says all group members are excluded. That would exclude all functional families. Associations are excluded. All functional families. Combine, meaning combinations of persons. That fails to test in Denoful. And coterie, that's a household with a group of individuals. That's all functional families. The very people you're required to include, you've excluded. We just simply strike those four words. Problem solved. No important concern that the city has is sacrificed by that change. Number two, ordinance 1545 excludes functional families by imposing a high burden of proof, clear and convincing, unconstitutionally. That burden is for libel and fraud cases. You cannot put it on top of a fundamental right and make families beg to keep their fundamental right. It is simply flat-out illegal. We take it out. Ordinance number three, ordinance 1545 excludes functional families by a strict substantive test. For example, you have to meet all the basic needs of everyone in the family. Children don't have money. They're subject to that test. Children don't qualify. We take out that substantive test. It's illegal. Fourth, ordinance 1545 offers no procedure to have a domestic.
Thirty seconds remaining.
To have a domestic unit in this city or to protect your family's right to live in its own home. It has no application to file, no procedure to decide if you qualify. It won't promise you answers on whether your fundamental rights will be protected, and by giving no procedure while requiring you to bear a burden of proof you can't meet, it's arbitrary, it's capricious, it's like asking a person with no legs to run a road race. We take that unconstitutional procedure out, make you compliant with Denoful, protect the taxpayers, and help all of our families be strong along with strong neighborhoods. So thank you for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your input. Jonathan Foreman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Foreman. I live in the Falcon Point neighborhood. Although I've been one of the assistant public defenders assigned to the 54B District Court for the last five years, I'm here tonight in my personal capacity, and I recognize my topic's not on the agenda, but I appreciate all of your attention anyway. Around five years ago, this body dismissed the city's long-term city attorney for prosecutions. My understanding is that part of the stated reasons for that action was because of the firm's handling of certain matters, including the collection of large fines from the most vulnerable populations of our city for simple traffic cases. Council at that time had recently instituted a fine schedule for the new city attorney to follow in those types of cases. However, when the new city attorney took over in 2020, to be clear, I'm not talking about Jar Marco. When the new city attorney took over in 2020, the situation actually got worse for the vulnerable population I largely represent. That city attorney claimed to not know about any council directives regarding a fine schedule in traffic cases, even after I sent it to him. Further, there seemed to be a system, at least for a while, a different system of justice in East Lansing, where defendants represented by private counsel received better offers and better treatment from the city attorney than defendants represented by the public defender's office. Far from this council's goal of changing course, in my view, the indigent accused were treated much worse once council hired a new city attorney in 2020. Now that the city is hiring a new city attorney for prosecution now, council has an opportunity to articulate the standards it wants to see in city prosecutions. As a resident concerned for the vulnerable populations who use the East Lansing streets, I would ask council to consider the following. First, council should ensure that the new city attorney is aware of the fine schedule prepared by the McGinty firm in 2020, and that it follows it where appropriate, and that the new city attorney follows it where appropriate. Second, council should ensure that the new city attorney is aware of the recent ordinance regarding impermissible reasons for a police traffic stop, and should require that that new city attorney not pursue prosecutions or civil proceedings against those drivers stopped in violation of that ordinance. Third, council should take the additional step of requiring that the new city attorney not pursue prosecutions where an initial traffic stop was based on non-traffic-related reasons, such as a suspended license. That was a policy back in 2020 and 2021. I don't know if it came from this council or from somewhere else. But fortunately, like a lot of things that happened during 2020, 2021, when people stopped paying attention, that policy disappeared. Prosecutions based on stops that are not safety-related don't serve to make us safer. They only serve to get people stuck in a further cycle of debt. Those actions, those three actions that I listed, would be a great first step in making sure that the most vulnerable among us are treated fairly in East Lansing, and that East Lansing doesn't serve to make their problems even worse. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your input. Joshua Hewitt.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joshua Hewitt, 540 Glenmore Road, Department 4. I'm just here to talk briefly about the police chief selection process. I've been attending or sitting in on Police Oversight Commission meetings for the last year and a half. I've attended a lot of them. And I think the selection that Robert Bellman made was the wrong one. I don't think Jen Brown is a good option for police chief. To be honest with you, I feel as if the whole process just wasted a lot of people's time, and I hope like going forward that Robert Bellman is actually here to serve the residents of East Lansing and not Mark Meadows and Eric Altman. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Kristen Good.
Hi, Kristen Good, 609 Wall Bridge Drive. And of course, thank you for all the work you do. I haven't been able to be at a meeting for a while, so I have a lot. I'm going to talk fast. Traffic, a lot of people are going to talk tonight about traffic. They're going to make some really awesome points. I really don't have much more to add other than I really support the research and the great work that they've done about that. I drive Hagadorn every day, where it narrows at Donley Elementary, and now where it narrows at Marble, and I get stuck every single day. And I just would really also encourage you, talk to the East Lansing Public Schools. I hope you're doing that when considering traffic. And I think that they have a responsibility too. I think that they should be at the table talking about their traffic needs with their schools. I don't quite know why they placed some of the schools as close to the road as they possibly could, but here we are. MSU, talk to them about the fact that they're taking record numbers of students, and yet we're like eliminating lanes in our roads. I don't think that considers the, our entire community in making those decisions, or maybe they are. Maybe you guys are talking to them. I'm not sure. Also, enforcement. I mean, raise your hand if you got a speeding ticket on Berchem in the 90s. You know, I go 25 on Berchem. I learned a lesson in the 90s. I learned it once. And I think a lot of students leaving the high school, I think a lot of citizens, it might be time to learn that lesson again. You don't speed on East Lansing city streets because we have a lot of neighborhoods, we have a lot of children, we like to bike, we like to walk. It's just not a place to speed, and I would really appreciate our police enforcing that. And to that end, police are doing a great job. I've talked to a few, and I appreciate them enforcing those speed limits, enforcing the policies that we do have in place. Also, to that end, El Fresco, I did a survey. I got a really great tote and t-shirt this weekend when we were down there for dinner. My survey, the interns were lovely. My responses were not positive. The colors are just really tacky. I mean, brick, stone, please. The colors, it's not, it doesn't translate as fun. My son, it was a beautiful evening. We were going to sit outside. My son said, "Mom, it smells." And then I had to explain to my daughter, "Well, yeah, you know, it's weird that skunks live downtown here." I mean, it's just ridiculous. Then on the way leaving on this beautiful evening, walking away from the restaurant to our car, they got to see an arrest, which, you know, my 11 and eight-year-old, that was a cautionary tale, I guess, don't steal from CVS, but they saw the whole thing. And, you know, the gentleman, it was warranted. The police officer, it was very calm. It was very orderly, but why? I mean, why is that our experience going downtown East Lansing these days? We're not going to be back for a while, and I really love LS. So that's disappointing. Housing, I see it's discussion only. I need to write to the Housing Commission. I'd really love to see more consideration given to Class 6 housing, sororities and fraternities. There's been a major crackdown in terms of the way in which they house the students, and I will tell you, sororities are released are the worries. There's so, there's so much oversight there in terms of alumni, safety concerns, and there are some things that I think are not defined and not considered. So again, I think it's discussion only, but before you vote on housing, I'd really like you to look at how Class 6 is defined. I think it's Class 6. And make sure that it's very descriptive and really considering the way in which the students use those spaces in a safe way, because that's very important. And in terms of definition of family, I know there's a big push on human rights. Honestly, living in a college town, I think that deliberate planning and very tight definitions are very appropriate to protect the students who would otherwise be crammed into pretty unsafe situations. So, thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anybody in the queue?
No callers in the queue.
Okay. Moving on, communication from council members. Ms. Singh.
Yes, a couple of things this evening. I know the city put out a press release, I just want to use this venue, that there will be additional storm debris pickup. I hope I'm not stealing the city manager's report later this evening. But after Memorial Day, so you have time, we will be asking you to subscribe to the Rules of Yard Waste, so please check out the city's website on those parameters. And I want to thank some of the outreach from the community in terms of, you know, really looking for some support there. Two, I also want to take a moment to thank both my colleagues and city staff on doing some one-on-one time with me as we focus and prepare for voting on our budget later this month. And these are not easy decisions, and we want to be thoughtful partners and representatives. And I continue to encourage the community to stay engaged and please, you know, use your voices as we proceed in that process. I know some of the comments on the Glen Karen crosswalk, we had additional comments and written submissions, and just want to note, my understanding, the hot tip I got from the city manager, that our very own Ron Lacasse, our director, will be mentioning that later this evening. So just for those that want to have a teaser for later in the agenda, there's what you got. And last, I got to note this too. This was on our Instagram, which I thought was super fun, which is our water and sewer. Authority won the Water Taste Off. We beat two communities. It's always good. It always feels good to beat Ann Arbor, but we also beat Bay City as well, so congratulations to our team there and winning the Water Taste Off. So with that.
To the person that commented about the council possibly not caring about the children, I'm trying to understand what your perspective was, because I know that we deeply and wholeheartedly are thinking about the children and their ability to safely get across streets and stuff, but I appreciate the comments. I saw the award for the water and felt bad because we've also been receiving calls. I've been receiving calls from people in our community who don't just have tree limbs, they have whole trees on their houses or cars or in their yards, and there's still a gap that exists in how our city can assist and how our sister cities are figuring out how to support these huge issues. And hopefully, the city manager will be able to make comments around that piece as well. I wasn't going to talk about a recent opinion that I read, thanks to a Lansing State Journal reporter, on an opinion that our own judge gave regarding some students who were, I don't know if they were students, some young people, maybe they weren't young, I think they were, who were ticketed for overnight parking. And our council had agreed to add more pace officers so that we could build revenue by ticketing people, and I didn't agree with the process, but also coming up with good ideas on how to build revenue for our community like that doesn't mean that we should operate outside of what the law or the ordinance says. So hopefully, and I'm sure there's more, but I look forward to hearing the entire picture of how that ticketing happened as far as the pace officers and the police officers' education on how to ticket and how long this has been going on, because typically, you know, there's someone talking somewhere, it's going on elsewhere, and that saddens me, we shouldn't make money where we shouldn't, despite our troubles in the city of East Lansing. Thank you.
Mr. Meadows.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to comment on the storm that hit the city, and, you know, I think the initial response from the city that, hey, it's up to you to get rid of your stuff, as the city manager knows, that was not something that I thought was the right way for us to proceed, and I understand that we're making a little bit of a change this evening. But historically, on a storm waste pickup, we've asked you to get it to the curb, and the city will pick it up, and it would be a special pickup in some manner so that there's no cost to the citizens of the community. It's one thing for you to go in your backyard and trim all your tree branches and then bundle them up, and yes, we've got to come out, and there's a cost involved in that, and you have to help alleviate that cost. You didn't ask for the storm to come into your backyard and knock down all your trees, and then for some people, they certainly didn't ask for their car to be crushed or their house to have a tree fall on it, and that happened. I know in Gainesboro, we had both, that I drove by and saw that, so I'm sure it happened in other neighborhoods. And thank God that some of our neighborhoods seem to be unhit whatsoever, other than a few leaves down on the street. So I think we dodged a little bit of a bullet that night, other than in certain locations, and I'm glad that we're going to be approaching this a little bit differently as we go into the future, a little bit more like we dealt with it in the past. The other thing I'd like to ask is that when the city attorney gives his report, if he has one, that he addressed Mr. Rose's comments this evening, and I don't know if he's prepared to do that, but if he is, I'd appreciate it. I'd like to have, you know, when we have comments like were made by Mr. Rose made and we just leave them unaddressed, I think it doesn't work well in the community, so I'd like those addressed this evening.
Counselperson Altman.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So the Mayor Protem stole my thunder about Elmswa. I had my remarks all laid out, because I'm actually the liaison to our drinking water. Yep, no, it's fine. I think it's really important, so the bottom line is we have the best tasting water in Southeast Michigan, which is great, and now we're competing against Lowell and Mansalona and Marquette in the state championships in September, right? So, go team. And one of the reasons I think this is significant is that it's a great example of the kind of work that happens behind the scenes all the time to keep stuff running, and we don't notice most of the time that our water tastes great because we don't think about it, right? We notice when you go somewhere else and the water's a bit smelly or the water's a bit chewy, but here it tastes great, and that's because we have a bunch of people who are experts and who are skilled and motivated, and they have the resources they need to do the jobs that they love to do, and that's why we have things like Good Water and a whole bunch of other stuff that happens behind the scenes, and that's what our taxes and fees pay for, and that's a useful thing to keep in mind as we sort of enter into budget season. And of course, the budget is up for adoption a week from today, and so if people have comments about that, I encourage them to come and talk during public comment at the next meeting. And then last, I do remember when we bought our house in Bailey in 2000, the realtor, the realtor told us, "You don't speed on Bircham." That was the message, right? And I didn't have to get a ticket. I learned that from our realtor way back when. We are in a different situation now. I think the road patrol there was probably six or seven police cars on the road 24/7. I don't know exactly what the number was at the time, but I do know that when I was on my first tour on council, the road patrol was five, so it had gone down, and now the road patrol is three, so it's 60% of what it was pre-pandemic. And that's one of the reasons that we're seeing issues with traffic enforcement, and it's not because the police are doing something else, it's because there aren't enough police, we're understaffed. That's a chronic issue with traffic enforcement. They go from call to call to call to call, and that doesn't leave them a whole lot of time to sit there and do traffic enforcement. That's one of the issues. So I think we're on an upward trajectory, is my understanding, and that, but it's still going to take a while, because of course, there are retirements coming, but with any luck, over the next couple of years, we will start to see police staffing increase and then the road patrol increase, and that will help with things like traffic enforcement and noise enforcement and those sorts of things. So we're aware of it, but it's currently, I think, at least in part, a resource issue that we're trying to overcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add, the agenda tonight is a discussion-only agenda, so we don't really have a city attorney report. The reality is that the city attorney will be involved, I believe, in some of our agenda discussions, and my preference is that rather than get into a back-and-forth with Mr. Rose, which I've studiously avoided for the last year, I'm not interested in pursuing that. I believe, based on communications from the city manager that you've all seen, that the city attorney will be preparing an opinion letter after tonight's discussion with regard to a variety of these issues that are frequently raised by Mr. Rose that we will have, I believe, before next week. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct.
So I'd prefer to handle it that way, Mr. Meadows, if that meets your expectations. Okay. City manager's report.
So just to reiterate what Mayor Protem Ebersall Singh mentioned, communication was issued this afternoon clarifying what the city will do in helping residents clean up from the storm. So I just want to read one or a couple of elements of it. So, starting next week, Tuesday, May 27 through Friday, May 30, the city will start picking up storm debris. We're asking that those items be placed at the curb no later than 7:30 a.m. on Tuesday, May 27, to guarantee pickup during the special collection. So, in particular, bundled sticks, limbs, and branches must be no longer than four feet, no wider than one foot in diameter, and weigh no more than 40 pounds in total. Individual limbs must be four inches in diameter or less, and so a yard waste sticker is not required for the city to pick up these items. I know that Councilmember Watson brought up, the larger trees that fell on cars or homes, it's our recommendation that they contact their insurance provider to see if they have coverage, and then the process that insurance provider will direct them on getting the private contractor on site to handle the removal of those larger trees. So that's my report, and any questions?
Good, Mayor.
Sure.
Question for the city manager by way of clarification. If people, I did get a call from somebody who plans to be out of town the week that that pickup's going to happen, and can they start moving stuff to the curb now?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, we're encouraging them to work on it this week and through the extended weekend to get it ready for the pickup following week.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
And if there's residents who believe that the tree that fell is a city tree, they can contact EBW to come and assess whether or not it is a city-owned tree that needs to be removed.
I take it you do not want them to work on their trees during the NCAA lacrosse semifinals between Cornell University and Penn State, or during the Indianapolis 500 on Sunday? Those are sanctified time periods when people are not expected to work?
Is that a full weekend there?
Not full, but it'll be full if Cornell gets past Penn State. Okay, anything else?
But now that you have your power back, you can watch them.
Now that I have my power back at my office after three days, and the three neighbors' trees that fell into my parking lot and covered the entire parking lot, the same parking lot that got flooded twice last year, just so the citizens understand that I feel their pain on all issues. Okay, discussion items. 6.1, Discussion of Traffic Calming and Other Local Traffic Concerns Within East Lansing. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Council. Ron LaCasse, Director of Public Works, here to discuss traffic calming and other traffic concerns in East Lansing. Can everybody hear me okay? I know I get, sometimes my voice does not carry. So, traffic calming, I'll stick to my notes here so I don't miss anything, is the process of altering the roadway in order to force drivers to be more compliant with area speed limits. The purpose of traffic calming is to reduce vehicular travel speeds, reduce cut-through traffic, and improve neighborhood and pedestrian safety. So with that, the Department of Public Works Engineering Department evaluates requests for traffic calming, measures using the city's action plan for addressing neighborhood speeding and traffic issues, which are attached to the agenda item. This plan was updated by the Transportation Commission in 2024 and further updated in 2025 as part of the non-motorized transportation plan update. The city's action plan has the following process. So step one is a petition where 50% of the affected residents or 20 addresses, whichever is fewer, would sign the petition requesting the city look into a particular issue, and that is to make sure that we're spending city resources and responding to something that's just more than a couple residents, because not every resident enjoys traffic calming in the neighborhood, we found over the years, and everybody likes driving over speed humps and things. We want to make sure there's neighborhood support before we spend city resources on looking into this particular concern, and that's a pretty standard process in other municipalities as well. Then there's an initial meeting held to make sure that we thoroughly understand what the concerns are and any potential suggestions the residents may have. Third step is evaluating traffic and the crash evaluation. So we take traffic counts, look at speeds, the 85th percentile speed, which I won't bore you with that definition, traffic counts, percent of violators that are over the speed limit and by how much, and then any crashes that occurred as a result, and that triggers a Level 1, 2, or 3 solution, depending on how that particular analysis scores. So step four is an onsite meeting with the residents, again, to go over the analysis and discuss any of the solutions, depending on which level of solution is warranted. And then step five is final polling with the recommended solution to make sure that the majority of the neighborhood or residents that are going to be impacted support that result. So there's a 50% criteria that we look for, voting in favor of the particular traffic calming measure that's taken. Important to note that stop signs are not to be used for traffic calming. The Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices prohibits the use of stop signs as a traffic calming device. Installing stop signs at all approaches to an intersection when it is not warranted does not result in fewer collisions or slower traffic, but instead could result in a risk of pedestrian and vehicle collisions, and what happens is people tend to come to rolling stops, and while it slows traffic, it gives the pedestrians the false impression that people are actually going to stop when they don't, so that's the risk there with pedestrians. So stop signs must be warranted, and their installation is based on traffic volumes, accidents, and any geometric or sight distance-type considerations. So that's a whole different analysis that we'd go through, not for traffic calming. So the steps we've taken so far, there's been three main concern areas that have come to light, both to our department and to council. And as a part of the non-motorized transportation plan, the city proactively did traffic counts and speed analysis in 14 different locations across the city, using some staff input based on what we understood historical issues have been, as well as neighborhood leadership input due to staffing issues. That was undertaken last fall due to staffing issues and trying to hire engineering staff. We've not done anything with that data yet, but we intend to. So that was kind of a proactive, sorry, approach to looking at problems that we knew existed and neighborhoods knew existed. The specific ones that have come to light recently are the Southeast Marble Neighborhood, which there are residents here this evening, and they also spoke at the Transportation Commission meeting. And the actions we've taken, some of the action taken so far is, speed limit signs have been installed in the neighborhood, and a speed study has been requested by one of our engineering consultants, and we sort of jumped the process in this case and didn't look for the petitions first because we're trying to get the counts before school is out, and if we waited for the petitions, we would miss that opportunity, we'd have to wait till fall, so we've kind of jumped over the process to get that data beforehand. And we also have a speed study as part of that initial 14 that was undertaken during the non-motorized transportation plan of John R. Pre-Hagadorn Road conversion, so this will give us a post-view of that to see whether some of those observations are true, that there's more traffic, higher speeds, that type of thing, so that'll be a good comparison The second issue is White Hills Drive. We've reconstructed that road essentially how it's existed for probably 25 years. There's Mid Block Island, there's a traffic circulate intersection, there's a four-way stop intersection, and then two four-way stops with raised crosswalks, so it's probably the most traffic-calmed street that we have in East Lansing, but it does have the high school nearby, so there's still concerns regarding traffic there. So we've reached out to a consultant there to also look at what can be done to improve traffic and safety and compliance, but that may lean more on the law enforcement side because we've done quite a bit out there, and that's kind of the initial feedback we've gotten from the consultant is, you know, it's pretty extensive traffic calming out there, it might be more of an enforcement issue, but we've asked them to look at what we've done, kind of maybe as a learning experience of maybe what we could have done differently or could tweak going down the road, so that's the status of that. And then the Harrison Crossing at Glen Karren, while not a neighborhood traffic issue, is a significant issue for pedestrians, and that group has filed a petition to have that looked at and have a list of things they would like to see to improve pedestrian safety in that location. So as a result of those complaints, at the Harrison Crosswalk, the city just issued an RFP. As luck would have it, we As, as luck would have it, we have the reconstruction of Harrison Road from Grand River to Saginaw. It was a 2028 project through Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. So we have issued the RFP for the design work in advance of that. And we've done that in a three-step approach and that, that RFP is, is going to be due here soon. I'll get to that later in the, in the presentation. But that RFP is to be completed in three phases with the first phase being the analysis of the Glen Cairn Crosswalk and what can be done in the short term, what can be done now before next school year to make that safer while also taking into account that there is a steep hill to the south and Saginaw Highway to the north. So having a traffic engineer look at that and see what can be done quickly to, to make this safer for pedestrians until the larger project can be undertaken. And we would expect those efforts to take place before the coming school year. Phase two is to look at the geometrics from South Lawn to Saginaw and see what can be done there, whether it's, whether we can cut that hill down a little bit with adjacent driveways, with underground utilities, whether we can, we can do things, you know, flare the curb out, put some, put a pedestrian down, that type of thing, what can be done in the, during the design phase of that project or the larger project to, to further improve that situation. And again, look at that, you know, kind of every option on the table type of thing and get feedback from the consultant in time if there's, if there's a number of different considerations that we have time to reach out to the school and get their input, reach out to the neighborhood and get their input before we incorporate those more, more expensive solutions into the road design. And then the third phase is the, is the final design. I will also add, that project is, was originally slated for 2028. Albert Avenue, which is in the budget that you're working on is, was for 2026. And we reached out to Tri-County to find out, as it would work out, the, the budgets are roughly the same. So we've reached out to Tri-County to see if we can flip-flop those projects and put Harrison in '26, Albert in '28. And that's two reasons, one, to expedite this project and two, because we're afraid of the conflict with the CWSRF project that we're working on bidding right now because part of that involves part of Bailey and closing Grand River. So we'd rather move that project till after the CWSRF project. So it works out for two different reasons there. The feedback we've gotten from Tri-County so far is positive, but we're not sure on that yet. So hopefully we'll be able to move that up, the bigger construction project. And then also increased enforcement. As we've talked about, the enforcement has been, been challenged, but Chief Brown has instructed patrol, when they're above minimum staffing, to dedicate an officer above minimum staffing to traffic enforcement in some of these areas to try to improve that aspect of things. And then also the communications is working on, we also have a shortage of crossing guards, which has also been brought to, to our attention. So we're working with communications to do kind of a, a blitz kind of campaign to try to get people to, to fill those positions so that we don't have gaps in, in our crossing guard posts during the school day. So next steps, again, we're working with communications and only on the crossing guards, but also on, on public education, you know, letting people know that, that even not posted, the neighborhood speeds are 25. There's a sample traffic calming quick reference that engineering is, is working on, those type of things that we can hand out at, at different events to try to educate the public on what, what options are available to them if they have concerns. So things like that to try to, try to help better educate the public on not only how to drive through neighborhoods and navigate the city, but also on, on what's available to them. Southeast Marble Neighborhood will reach out with the action plan and get that process started in kind of in conjunction with the, with the speed analysis that we've already moved forward on. And then when we get the results of that speed study, we'll follow the rest of that process with the neighborhood. White Hills Drive I already touched on, the consultant is still going to look at that, at that corridor and see if, if they can offer any, any additional suggestions on White Hills Drive other than, than enforcement. And then the Harrison Road Rehabilitation Project is where I have my notes here, the Design Consultant Award. We're anticipating to have that on the June 17th meeting and with a timeline of, of having those, those kind of low-hanging fruit, quick reaction stuff by July so that we can implement that by August, get that on a council agenda and get that implemented by, before school starts. And obviously council will see the results of all this effort in either traffic control orders for things being installed or contracts for items, physical construction items. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of questions. I just wanted to ask you about the, the process a little bit. I note that the Action Plan for Addressing Neighborhood Speeding and Traffic Issues that is dated April 25th, 2025. You've got that attached to the, to the agenda. And it mentions that it is, it was adopted by the East Lansing Transportation Commission, presumably under their rulemaking authority, which is provided for all of our boards and commissions to govern their activities. But those have to be approved by the council. Did this come to council? I don't remember seeing it, so.
We have not seen that it, that has ever gone to council. We've kind of looked through and not been able to find anything. I, I called Nicole McPherson, which I'm sure you guys all know to see whether she was aware and she was not either. This, this document has been around in a, in, in some form or fashion for quite a few years. So I don't know whether it ever went before council.
I don't remember ever having a vote on any part of this, so I think we need to take care of that so that we're in compliance with the ordinance in particular. And then along the lines of that, one of the letters that we received from individuals in the Glen Cairn community mentioned that they had petition for a stop sign on one of the streets. And that was denied to them, but I don't remember that coming to council either. Do you, do you know what happened with regard to that?
I do not. And to my knowledge, this process has been followed over the years. I don't believe that the analysis and, and either approvals or denials have come to council other than if there's a traffic control order being approved or a construction contract to install a traffic calming. But I, I don't believe, I've not always been involved in the traffic side of things, but I don't believe that, I don't remember ever seeing a denial come with reasoning behind it.
I guess I do remember us approving a stop sign on Collingwood that was recommended against by the Transportation Commission and the, and the department. And that was a number of years ago. So I would like to know from the city attorney, if not now, then later, whether a denial or an approval must come to city council so that council can make that decision. Another letter that we got from Glen Cairn pointed out that a few years ago, we made it clear that the council would be holding a public hearing on some of these issues when it hadn't been done previously. And I think we need to make sure that we're complying with the ordinance and the restrictions on the ordinance. Then I've got another question with regard to the reference in the comments to the, the state prohibition against using a stop sign for, it says, "Stop signs shall not be used for speed control." I don't know what else a stop sign would be used for, but nonetheless, that is the state statement. And of course, traffic calming, I think you could probably argue that any kind of traffic control is a traffic calming activity. But you made reference to that and I want to just point out that maybe we should start looking at this as pedestrian safety instead of traffic calming because the state provision also says controlling the direction that conflicts the most with established pedestrian crossing activity or school walking routes. So I think that within that neighborhood in particular, that given the, the reason for the request for the stop sign, it would seem clear to me that probably that should have been approved, especially given the proximity to Glen Cairn School and the fact that virtually every neighborhood street in the city of East Lansing is a neighborhood route to a school. So I'm hoping that in the future, we sort of change our way of looking at this. And if it takes a, an ordinance change, I'd like that advice as well because I don't want you violating the ordinances either. And if that's the way we've structured this, I think we need to take another look at it. So, thank you for everything that you do and the work that you did on this and all this information that you provided us tonight is very valuable. I would say that another thing that I think we should be looking at is to, to make sure that while school is, is going to take its summer hiatus, that by the time these kids go back to school, there's got to be something at Glen Cairn School to control traffic so that there is safe crossing for those students, whatever it takes. I'd like to see that done.
Okay, other questions or discussion?
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we had a person come up for public comment that talked about those slowdown signs. And I know Meridian Township has some of those people that tell you to, you know, the green people that tell you to slow down. Any thoughts on whether that's effective or if that's something that we can consider for our community?
I don't have any information off the top of my head about how effective they are, but that's part of the levels of, of traffic calming is signage and, and we would look at all, all the available options depending on the search circumstance.
All right. And so I'm glad that the recent issues and concerns about speeding were able to get addressed. And I know that there's been times that the Assistant City Manager, for example, would receive communications from the public and she would respond, but we would, wouldn't know. And so my question is, what percentage, and this might be for you too, Mr. Bellman, what percentage of people's concerns are able to be addressed as in this is where you put your concern in for speeding instead of it coming to council or only, or them coming up for public comment only? My question is, is anyone in the background still providing that information when, when they write in?
So if a resident writes in a city council, yes. I see those and forward them on to the appropriate department. If it's traffic enforcement, it goes on to the police department. If it is more of concerns about raised crosswalks or signage, it goes down to Ron and DPW.
Mr. Lacoste, it sounded like you said, what I heard you say was that Chief Brown is deprioritizing speeding.
No, no. When she's above minimum staffing, she's directed that additional officer to be dedicated to traffic enforcement.
When it's above minimum?
That's my understanding, yes. I mean, other times as well, but, but that's, in those specific cases, she's dedicating that officer to that, to, to focus on that. It's not like they won't be doing it the other times. I, I didn't mean to imply that. They're doing it the other times as they can fit it into the schedule, but as Council Member Altman said, it's, it's a pretty busy call volume for a low number of officers. So that minimum will hopefully be able to take the call volume. That above minimum staffing officer, she's prioritizing traffic, but they will also do it when they have time with the minimum staffing as well.
Okay, and go ahead, Mr. Bellman.
No, I was just going to indicate interim captain, Adam Park is here if you want him to address what ELPD is doing as it relates to traffic enforcement and staffing challenges.
May I? Is that Mayor, is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And I'm, I've got, I'm glad you're standing up here in front of us. So I heard someone say there's a certain number of police that are on the road. Is that true or is that not? Because that leads me to think there's no minimum number. There's a number period, which someone said like three.
Three is our minimum staffing, correct.
And so you never have four or five?
We do. And that's what Mr. Lacoste was saying, that is, if we have more than three, then we'll dedicate a, a unit specifically to traffic enforcement.
Why would you have more than three?
If for whatever reason we have people available, then we'll have some additional, you know, officers then working traffic.
And there's slower days, like...
Correct.
And so are those days that the three people could?
So anytime that we have more than three on day shift, Sunday is our slowest day. So we have them working during the week. Let's say we have staffing available for a fourth officer for a few days. We avoid Sunday because Sunday is our slowest day for traffic, typically Saturday as well. You know, the exceptions obviously are, you know, home football Saturdays. It's, it's very busy.
And my final question for right now, my children's father lives in Hawkeness Community and I have soccer players, so they go to the soccer complex. One day there was a car crash right outside the soccer complex and I was able to find help eventually through ELPD. But I was told that Chandler, that street is not East Lansing Police Cops Street.
So I, I believe you're talking about Coleman Road right there?
Yeah, Coleman Road.
Okay. So we definitely have some jurisdiction there. Hawkeness is our jurisdiction. Some of the condos, apartments on the south side further to the west are our jurisdiction, but the apartments further to the east, closer to Chandler are not. Those are Bath Township.
And so what about the street?
So that's a great question. Parts of the street are us, parts of the street are Bath Township.
Okay. I'm not trying to put you on the spot right now, but I've witnessed in the past four weeks at least two cop cars parked at facing Coleman Road. So then it's like, well, if they can face Coleman Road and they're not arrest, and hopefully they're not pulling people over because it's not our jurisdiction, why can't they be somewhere else parked?
Okay, that is our jurisdiction. There's, we certainly have parts of that.
So you're telling me Chandler Road up to Hawkeness Community where you turn into, that that's our jurisdiction? That street, Coleman?
Coleman. So parts of that are, yes.
And so is, am I correct to assume they're there to monitor?
So that I don't know. Sometimes officers pull off and do paperwork in their car. We have the NCAR computers, so they do reports in their car. If there's a fresh crime, it could be a, a dog track, it could be a perimeter point. So we stop our vehicles on, in different places for different reasons.
Thank you. And again, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, I understand.
The cars are facing Coleman Road and so I'm just wondering, maybe they can do their paperwork on some of the streets then where our communities are complaining because we have seen that even invisible impact of seeing like cop cars. And I'm not, you know, preaching directly to you at all.
No, I understand.
Thank you.
Yes?
I just want to know a couple things. I, because I've seen or I've heard from the community outside, outside of public comments tonight about traffic calming measures and folks being critical about the prioritization of that. But that is common nomenclature amongst traffic engineers with the, I just looked up the federal, you know, Highway Administration, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And again, as you kind of laid out, the, these are well-studied techniques, tactics to help protect pedestrians and traffic user, or car.
Correct. And there's lots of different options depending on the specific situation that are, you know, some can be more or less effective depending on the situation. Some will lend themselves to lots of different options. It just depends on the situation.
And then I hope, because we've talked about enforcement in the past too, and I know we've, we've had a number of folks from Southeast Marble come through and the note on the school and during drop-off times, just the, how condensed that area is with traffic. But we've also had folks, Mr. Mishur, if I'm recalling correctly, from public testimony talk about he did see an officer pulling someone over in that neck of the woods. So I hope there's at least some clarity. I'm not saying it's a perfect, but in terms of how our law enforcement is prioritizing getting cars on the street as well as some of these provisions that our DPW team is working with for these projects.
as well as some of these provisions that our DPW team is working with for these projects. I think you got something, Adam.
I was going to add something to that same topic. So for the remainder of the school year, every school day, we are adding an additional officer to work specifically from seven to four in the school areas.
So an additional provision. When does that start?
Immediately.
Immediately, all right. Because we'll hear about it.
You will, yes.
Yes. Okay. And then I want to just point, I'm a representative of the city on the tri-county planning board. And I'm happy to echo our request to do that swap. But, you know, please let me know how I can be supportive in that chair as you're working with them to get that approved.
All right, thank you.
And then one, we heard, it hasn't come up tonight, about the Kensington and Grand River Crossing. And that light functioning or not functioning? Not, okay. We got, got a hot tip right here in the audience. We got it on the director's radar here. Okay, thank you. I'm just going through my list real quick. Unfortunately, I'm not as, I'm not as organized as some of my colleagues. But, and then I did see some critical comments from our community about this idea of shaving the hill on Harrison. That that seems silly. But why would we pursue that?
It's a, it's a sight distance. You know, one of the options is a hawk pedestrian signal, which actually stops traffic at the crossing. And where a crossing guard would stop it, just when there are kids there, a hawk signal would stop it for a predetermined time. And if traffic backed up.
It's a hawk crossing, what is that?
It's a, yeah. And which protects the pedestrians. But if traffic backs up towards that hill and traffic crests that hill, there's very limited sight distance. And they could end up crashing into the car in front of them, potentially, you know, pushing traffic into the crosswalk.
So it's a bit of visibility, but also the technology for the signs?
Correct. And also the intersection of North Lawn and Harrison is not great because it's right at the other side of that hill. So if we can improve the sight distance of vehicles exiting that intersection, it would also help there. So I don't think we can cut all of the hill down, but I think we can improve it some, is my hope.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. And the last thing I would mention is for those podcast fans out there, for Smartless is one, a podcast I listen to occasionally. Pete Buttigieg was on, and they asked him, what is the one thing that he learned as the director or the Secretary of Transportation? And it was, do not text and drive. Distracted driving is terrible for safety. So anyway, just thought I'd throw that in there.
Officer Park, could you come back up, please? I have a couple of questions maybe for the two of you. So if you have a stop sign and somebody runs a stop sign, nobody sees that to ticket that person unless there's a police officer there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if we don't have enough police officers to enforce the traffic laws we have, then we have an issue because we have signage that dictates that people are supposed to do something. And unless there's somebody there to enforce the law, they just go ahead and ignore the traffic devices, correct?
Certainly happens, yes.
And you've had that experience over several years in East Lansing?
More than 20, yes.
Okay. And I'm just curious, in terms of your experience and your area of expertise, have you noticed that that occurrence has occurred more during and after the pandemic?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, back to you, Ron. The, do you know, and if you don't know, I'd like to have you check, and maybe you're going to have to coordinate with the police department on this. But are we aware of specific traffic counts on Harrison Road in the last 12 months?
I don't off the top of my head. I would have to check with our engineering team.
Could you check?
What section of Harrison? Is there any?
Right in front of the school, north corner of North Lawn. But really, I'd be interested in any traffic count from Lake Lansing down to Kellogg Center. And conversely, I'd be interested in any traffic count on Harrison from Kellogg Center south to Jolly Road. And at the same time, and if in fact, Mr. City Manager, we can resurrect the records, I'd be interested in whether we have historical data on Harrison Road in that regard. I'm literally certain there must have been traffic counts back, at least when I was on the school board in that same area. And hopefully, we have that information someplace. And then, Ron, also, have there been what I would term speed studies within the definition of the Uniform Manual Traffic Control Devices on Harrison Road in the last 12 months?
Not that I'm aware of, unless it was part of that Safe Routes to School. I'd have to double-check that with our engineering staff.
Would you please check on that and get back to us? And as an extension of that then, and segueing to my last set of questions, would you please, with the city manager and the police department, find out if there are speed studies going back historically on Harrison Road in the same general area? In other words, from North Lawn north to Lake Lansing and from North Lawn south, essentially all the way to Jolly Road? And of course, where I'm going on this, I'd be particularly interested in finding out if there's been a change in those traffic counts and speed since all of the reconstruction has started and is occurring on the expressways. So I, so if you could get back to us on that, please, with the city manager.
Certainly.
I have a couple of questions. I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So I'm a little confused still about stop signs. I was interested to read in your notes that the state law says that stop signs aren't for traffic calming. But it sounds like they're not for speed control, which might be a little bit different. I don't know. But when we make decisions about whether to put in a stop sign, what's our warrant criteria? Is that a policy? Is that a set of policy prescriptions that DPW has? Is that in an ordinance somewhere? How do we make that decision?
I don't have all that information off the top of my head. I know, I know they look for certain, I talked to our traffic engineer about that or our engineering administrator. And he said for crash data, we're looking for greater than five and three years or greater than three and two years. But there's other factors as well. Like I said, there's sight distance issues. There's, you know, if you're intersecting with a major street or a kind of a T-intersection, there's other things that are looked at to determine whether those are warranted.
So one of the things I don't get about the crash data criterion is that it seems a bit circular to argue that you need crash data to warrant a stop sign, but the purpose of a stop sign is to prevent crashes. That sort of seems to argue against the idea that stop signs don't help, right? If we put them in to avoid crashes, then it seems like there's a presumption that they're useful, right?
Yes, to prevent crashes in those situations, yes. But they're not effective or not warranted for speed control just because of the, like I said, the rolling stop issue becomes a hazard for pedestrians, or it can, because the pedestrians or cyclists assume people are going to stop at those signs. And when they're put in where they're not warranted as stop signs, you tend to get more rolling stops or people ignoring them.
So I, do you have, are there data or studies that support that? Because I would be interested in reading those. It's a little counterintuitive to me.
I can certainly.
So, and then I'm also still not sure whether, so I know that the council has, has to approve some traffic control orders. I know that we approved, for example, a no-left-turn order on Bircham and Lexington at some point. And we approved some new parking control orders by the high school. And so I'm still a little confused about whether the decision to put in a new stop sign, whether that buck stops with us or not. And do we know that, the answer to that?
I think I know the answer to that. So if, you will may allow me, a traffic control order is required to be passed by the council in order to make it an enforceable violation slash ordinance violation. And so if, in fact, there's no traffic control order for a specific traffic device, then a ticket for that alleged occurrence is not valid. There has to be a traffic control order, and it has to be approved by the city council. I think that answers your question. Mr. City Attorney?
So I think that's correct as it relates, as the mayor was talking about enforceability of the traffic control orders. As far as the process for the request for a stop sign or a traffic control device and its review, I've been looking in the ordinances. I can't locate it. I believe it's administrative, though, is my recollection.
So that doesn't address the flip side, which is if a, if a traffic sign, if the staff determination is that a stop sign is not warranted, does the city council have the opportunity now to say, well, yeah, we think it is warranted despite staff's recommendation, and we're going to place one? Do we have that authority? In other words, which we don't have functionally if it never reaches us?
Absolutely. I do not believe that we have an ordinance written to provide for that appealed review.
Okay, so if there's a denial of a stop sign, the council never finds out about it? Is that correct?
I believe that they currently would not find out about it as an administrative decision.
Okay. Not sure how I feel about that. But I wanted to close and just say thanks to our DPW director for taking a multi-pronged approach here. You're communicating with police. It sounds like the kind of process where somebody has to take the lead to cross, to talk across departments. And I'm guessing that's you on this project? Is that?
City Mayor. Self-direct that, yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Well, I appreciate the integration of all the different streams of information and all the different departments that are involved in this.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything, yes, sir?
Thanks. There have been, I think you raised the issue and maybe one other speaker did. But what we did do with our ordinances is in section 4431, we adopt the Michigan Vehicle Code, the Uniform Traffic Code, and the Motor Carrier Safety Act as governing in the city of East Lansing. Within the Michigan Vehicle Code, there is the authority and requirement for a uniform system of traffic control devices. And that's the basis that you were referring to when you said that it's prohibited to use a stop sign for slowing down traffic. And that does, the state statute actually limits that to state highways. But we've adopted it, and I'm not sure what impact that has. I will say that with regard to that last question you asked, Tony, I went through the, our ordinances this afternoon looking specifically for that authority. And I couldn't find any authority for anything other than referring these things to the city council for approval or denial. So I think we do need an answer to that that's more specific than, I think maybe they can do that administratively. And then to your questions, I just want to bring some things to light. We had to sue the city of Ingham County, or I mean, the county, to assert our authority over Chandler Road north of Lake Lansing Road. We successfully did that. So from Lake Lansing Road to the city's border, on the west side, that's really Coleman Road. And on the east side, that goes all the way up, just south of Hawkeness. So we do control the traffic and can write tickets there. I'll just say, my personal experience up there is that we set that speed limit at 35 miles an hour, and everybody drives at least 45 miles an hour. And that may explain why police officers are parked up there is there's regular high speeds, you know, along that. If we were using the 85% rule on traffic speeds that the state police use, we probably would raise that speed limit to 45 miles an hour. And we probably should take a look at that anyway. I think it's probably safe, given the size of the lanes there and everything else. And then just a personal experience, I'll just say that when I come out of North Lawn onto Harrison, I cannot see traffic from the left-hand side because of that hill. And if somebody's coming out of there in the morning and trying to drop their kid off at school, there's no, there's almost no way to be sure that you're not going to be T-boned as you cross that street. So carving down that hill is a really good thing for us to do, I think.
Thank you, Ron. Why don't we take a 10-minute break, please? I'd like to call us back into session. And before we move on the agenda, I might, I will make a motion to defer item six point five, the discussion regarding noise issues, to our next occurring discussion-only meeting. Second from Watson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. That means that we then return to item six point two, discussion about proposed ordinance fifteen thirty-eight, an ordinance to establish a new rental housing regulations chapter in the city of East Lansing Code, I think we mean there. Proceed, please.
Elise Hodges, Housing and University Relations Administrator, and that's here with me as well, Director of Planning. Just to give a brief kind of overview, this ordinance was first introduced in August of twenty twenty-four. Housing Commission was tasked with reviewing it, and they, they reviewed it three times in the fall of twenty twenty-four, which resulted in proposed changes that they sent on to city council. City Council then asked that a working group be developed. That working group consisted of our city attorney, city manager, Mark Meadows, Annette Irwin, and myself. And we took Housing Commission's comments in addition to the wording from Prop One, because it had passed at that point, and developed the, an amended draft that we brought back to city council in January. In January, city council then sent it back to Housing Commission to review the changes, and city, and the Housing Commission worked in February and in March during their meetings and provided a new memo to city council with changes. From there, the working group took that, took that memo from Housing Commission, added changes, added those changes, and also incorporated feedback from Councilmember Altman. So now we have up, up for discussion this substitute draft of ordinance fifteen thirty-eight. So, there you go.
Questions? Dr. Altman, please.
So I'm not sure how we want to handle this procedurally. I'm fine with whatever we want to do. I have about thirty comments on fifteen thirty-eight. Some of them are pretty low level. Some of them are more substantive. We can, I can proceed with my comments page-wise and just go through them all, if that's okay with people, but I'm also happy to do anything else that we might want to do, Mayor.
No, I, I, I think it's fine, and I assume that what we're having here is a discussion concerning this proposed ordinance, so that we may have things for staff to check and get back to us on before we take this up again. So whatever makes sense in terms of discussion, and if you have a list, you probably are better prepared than I am, so I, my vote is to go ahead and proceed, if that's okay with everybody else. Is that okay with everybody else? Mr. Bellman, what does that mean?
So can I just ask that you go page by page?
Yep.
And then that way, any council member can jump in on suggested changes to those pages, as well as Councilmember Altman.
That's fine with me. I don't need to hog the floor for this. Okay. Well, because I don't know where everything is section by section. I mean, the pages have page numbers. Oh, do they?
Yeah. They should.
Yeah, the problem, I, I always, there's always transpositions between the page numbers and different versions, so if you could maybe also call out the section.
I will call out the section.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, okay. So page one, second line from the top, ordinance fifteen thirty-eight. So I think that ordinance fifteen forty-nine should be tie-barred to this one, because otherwise we risk deleting all our rental regulations.
We, I, I believe that's the intent when it goes for a vote, is to have them together.
But they're not written, if they're, if they're moved in the same motion, then that's great. If they're moved to separate ordinances, then we potentially have a problem.
I, I believe we were going to put them on the agenda together.
The intent is there'll be a single item on the agenda.
Okay, great. That deals with that issue. Page two, section seven dash twenty-two, which is definitions. I'll start with the federal service definition, so I have a bunch of substantive questions and concerns about this, so. I'm going to refer to the definition of federal service and also the provision in seven dash eighty-two sub-two that makes use of that definition, because those sort of go together.
Can I just interrupt you and ask you for a, is that term used in the proposition that passed?
Correct.
Okay, that's right. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I get that, yeah.
So the definition itself is, strikes me as ambiguous, so one way to highlight that is I, for example, as a faculty member at MSU who gets, who has federal research grants, I derive some proportion of my annual salary from federal grants. Does that mean that I am in federal service?
Yeah, well, in our working group, we discussed that, and I believe we, the answer was no, that does not mean that. You are an employee of Michigan State University, not the federal government.
Eric, can I jump in? Yep. So I, I have exactly the same concern, so I, I mean, I, I, I'm a definitional construct person, and I'm worried about this definition, and the, the two words are used in the, in the charter provision, but I would want staff and city attorney to look at whether there are other definitions of federal service extant, and among others, we might look at five U.S. Code, section eight five oh one, which I think defines federal service for what I consider to be federal employees, rather than the attenuated situation raised by Dr. Altman, which is a very real thing to raise. And I, I, so five USC, section eighty-five oh, oh one. And I will just say that there are others that I didn't totally look at, but that one seemed, Eric, to me, to be fairly specific and would have excluded the kinds of things you're talking about, that you and I have talked about before, that kind of raised questions as to what exactly is, quote, "federal service," end quote. So I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just wanted to insert that as a question to staff and city attorney to see if we've got some other definitional constructs. I'm sorry?
Do you mind if I read that into the record?
Read what into the record?
That definition.
If you want, sure.
Yeah, if, it, it defines federal service as service performed after nineteen fifty-two in the employ of the United States, or an instrumentality of the United States, which is wholly or partially owned by the United States. And I have zero problem with that being the definition of federal service in this, in this ordinance.
Yeah, I, I just don't know, and I think there's other ones out there, so I'm, I'm sorry, Eric, to interrupt, but go, go ahead, maybe.
Just outside of adding that definition clarity that, George, you, you put out there for staff to look at is, do we add anything outside of the jurisdiction of East Lansing? Federal, in federal service, outside of the jurisdiction of East Lansing or the state of Michigan? I don't know if putting a geography on that is another option, but.
Yeah, I, I, my gut reaction to that is that just makes it worse, because then you have, it just makes it worse in my mind, but I understand your point, so. It's a question for staff to look at and city attorney to look at. Go ahead, Eric, please.
Well, and, and all those comments, I think they highlight my issue, which is it's ambiguous, and so you've got two thousand faculty at MSU who are going to be asking that question, right? Potentially, right? And can we head that off? Unrelate, well, maybe related. When you get to seven dash eighty-two sub-two, which actually uses that definition, in my view, that use is discriminatory, because it applies only to a certain class of employee, right? So if you're a federal employee, you have access to a preferred process that is not available to you if you're a state or a corporate employee. So my question is, does this special process raise equal protection issues under state or federal law? Because if you're in one class of occupation, you have access to a preferred process, and if you're a different class of occupation, you don't. And so I guess that's a question for the city attorney.
There were a lot of uncertainties and ambiguities that were set forth in proposal one, and I think we, we've talked about that many times in closed sessions or otherwise. But proposition one right now is in the charter, and so when we were working on this, we wanted to recognize it and try to limit it so that it wasn't as ambiguous as it is in proposal one. We did limit it down to those who are employed by the federal government, including those serving in the federal military. So I think that does go along with, similarly, but not as specific as five USC eighty-five oh one, so we could look at that. Whether, though, whether it provides a benefit to those working for the federal government and not for the state of Michigan government, I'd really have to take a look at that and provide an opinion.
And also on that exception, that's not just for federal workers, so sabbatical, if faculty want to go on sabbatical, the house-sitting exemption is for them as well.
Well, but, but that's not, I mean, that's true, the house-sitting exception is there, but there's a phrase in seven dash eighty-two that grants a special process for people who are in federal service. Residents in federal service who are required to temporarily relocate, et cetera, et cetera, shall be permitted to utilize this exception without regard to time limitations set forth herein for the duration of their service. So, but I, I take your point, and actually, that takes me to one of my other questions, which is, if we are required to implement the federal service provision of Prop One, if we decide that it's, doesn't raise equal protection issues, do we have to implement it in the ordinance? Or can we implement it as part of the exceptional circumstances provision that is new in this ordinance? So there's a house-sitting provision, right, that gives you two years out of every five by right. And then what the ordinance adds is an exceptional circumstances provision that allows that time limit to be extended, right? If you, if an applicant shows good cause. And my question is, can we implement that federal preserve, federal service provision in the course of an applicant requesting for an extension? So if, if I'm an applicant and I want an extension, right, I want to do three years instead of two, I submit my materials to the designated city official who's going to make the decision about the extension, right? And as part of my materials, I submit what I consider to be evidence of federal service, and I cite Prop One, and then it's up to the person making the decision to weigh that evidence in addition to all the other evidence that I've submitted.
Yeah, I think part of the goal that this council gave to the working group and directed to us, and the reason that this was implemented in the first place, was to remove the rental regulations from the building regulations and make them clearer and easier for individuals to read. And so our thought was that people wouldn't have to pick through the charter, and I'm not, I don't mean to speak for the whole working group, obviously, but one of the goals of clarity was trying to incorporate that so that it was all in one location. But I certainly see yours, what you're referencing, and I think that that would be a permissible use of the exceptional circumstance additionally.
And I, I agree with Tony that, you know, we could move it to exceptional circumstances and just simply, I guess we just end up taking the phrase that permitted to utilize this exception without regard to time limitation, or whatever that sentence is, we can move it to eight. It doesn't change anything. It, it just simply moves it within the ordinance. I mean, you're going to have to have something like that, no matter what, whether it's in exceptional circumstances or up where it is right now.
Well, and, and my contention is we don't have to have anything in the ordinance.
At all.
At all. Right? Because you can implement just by the applicant submitting evidence of federal service, and, and maybe under the exceptional circumstances. In that paragraph, we could say applicants may choose to submit evidence of federal service.
Yeah.
And the, the context for this, I'll, and then I'll be quiet, at least for a moment.
No, it's, it's fine, go ahead.
The context for this is, in my view, it's discriminatory to privilege people from who have one occupation versus another. That, whether it rises to an equal protection issue, it sounds like we don't know yet, but I consider it discriminatory apart from that, because we're favoring one group of people over another for no real rational basis. And so on that basis, I would prefer not to have something in our ordinance that I consider to be discriminatory. That's my, that's my reasoning.
Can I, can I interrupt you for a second? So I'm concerned, I, I actually think if we're going to do this, it ought to be in the ordinance, because then it's clear. I will just say, historically, I believe there has been a trend in American law, for instance, the Veterans Preference Act is an example, where at least people in the military have gotten certain dispensations for these things. And, and candidly, I don't view that as an equal protection thing, but we do need the opinion in that regard. So, you know, whatever the council decides is what the council decides. I, I do have another question, though, however, in terms of that section on the federal service thing, which is, I, I guess I don't quite understand, well, let me say two things. I don't quite understand how two hundred miles ends up being the category. And then the other thing here is, and I just want to make this, and then I'll shut up about this issue, but I think it- this issue, but I think it, it continues throughout this thing. I'm very leery of setting up some sort of administrative review under the auspices of the city manager because, A, I think the criteria for that review are vague under this set of proposals, and B, I think the procedure itself is vague. So I'm concerned that after we get through all this by creating this exceptional circumstances thing, we then have created another issue in terms of variety of constitutional rights. I, I would suggest that it may be better, if we're going to do something like that, that we create a direct appeal to the city council or a designee, a set of city council members or something like that with some additional criteria. And that doesn't even get us to the clear and convincing evidence thing yet, which I am in favor of, the clear and convincing evidence. So I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to give that view from a thousand yards.
We're still talking about, let me ask your, answer your first question, which is, as we looked at federal service, you know, let's just say that a resident in federal service is deployed from East Lansing where they're doing ROTC to Mount Pleasant to do ROTC, and so they're saying that, you know, you have to be up there for the next six months. That's a temporary leaving East Lansing, theoretically allowing this person who could easily drive home every day to rent out their house. And it seemed like we were looking for a way to identify this in a manner which defined temporary relocation in a more meaningful way. So the question is, is this a more meaningful way? Or should it be outside the state of Michigan? You know, what, what really is it? This was our best guess during the time that we were meeting, as this accomplished it because it was at least two hundred miles away, but, you know, something else could work too.
I understand, thank you for that. Okay, Dr. Altman.
Thank you. So I had the two hundred mile limit on my list also as something I had questions about because it doesn't seem, it's not contemplated in the new charter language. And so the question I had both about this and the idea of treating federal employees differently is, does it expose the city potentially to liability, right? So if, you know, if I'm not a federal employee but my neighbor is, and we have basically identical, identical situations, except that I'm a state employee or MSU employee, my neighbor's a federal employee, do I have a right to sue the city based on equal protection concerns? And I understand that anybody can sue about anything, but that's, that's one of the reasons I'm concerned about this issue. My last question on this point is whether we could simply make a lot of this go away by defining federal service simply as those serving in the military.
Yes, we could.
So why don't we just do that?
That's not the impetus.
Well, we don't, we don't know that. My, my job is not to understand the impetus, my job is to understand the language.
Can I give an example of, so I received a call a few weeks ago, I had actually reached out to the owner because they were listing their house for sale on, in Harrington, on Harrington, or listing it for rent. It's in an RO one, so it's not eligible. So I called, it was a third party, I called them, and they ended up getting the owner in touch with me. The owner is in California, they bought the property late fall with the intention of moving to East Lansing. The husband works for the federal government and was planning to transfer. January twentieth happened, and all transfers were halted. So now they have a property in California and they have a property in East Lansing. They can't afford to pay both mortgages, so they were trying to rent it out until the transfer can go through. So I gave them the house-sitting exemption form and said, once you have it rented, fill out this form, so then that you can have that house sit there for up to two years while his job is in Limbo right now, or until they sell their California home because it is up for sale. So that's an example of, he's not in the military, but he does work for the federal government, where this house-sitting exemption would, would work for them.
And I understand that, but, but anytime you make a policy, there's going to be people who are limited by the policy and people who aren't. And the question is, what's the right policy? I don't want to build a policy around one particular example, right? I don't think that, I don't think that works. And so I, a lot of my questions are moot if we simply define federal service in terms of military service, and so that ultimately would be one of the things that, that I would support if we went down that, that path.
I just, my last, on top of, there are people that have gotten state government experience that may be eligible for a federal appointment, or they have been in the prior administrations, and they would want to do two years of service in DC and then come home. That is, in my background and field, happens frequently. And, you know, I, I would want to support that, so...
Well, I think there's another issue there too, which is that, as I recall, I'm trying to bring up proposal one right now, but I think both military and federal service were words used in proposal one. Just let me see if I can find it here, or maybe, Robert, you got a copy of it there?
Oh, I...
Proposal one?
Yeah.
I don't have it. I'm trying to pull up all my Eli articles, and I'm not finding the actual proposal.
Playing to the crowd now.
So I have it here.
Please.
Okay, just read that section, man.
It is, it's number two here, and its persons in military or other federal services assigned outside the area will qualify for house-sitting exemption for the duration of their service.
Right, so the, you know, I don't think we can not put federal service in there, it's not, and we can't define it as the same as military service because proposal one itself identifies those as two different things. Now, George, am I...
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay. The, so we, we can't do that. And I do think that we have a responsibility, whether we agree with proposal one or not, and I made it pretty clear that I don't necessarily agree that it should have been passed and that it's even lawful, but the people of this community voted to, to put it in the charter, and we have a responsibility to reflect that in our ordinances. So I don't think it's appropriate for us to not make reference to federal service because I don't think it's appropriate for us to then sort of just leave it as, you know, something hanging out there in the air that hopefully somebody happens to read the charter someday and decides, oh, I can, I can, I get to have, you know, do house-sitting because I'm in federal service. We need to put it all in one location, and how we construct that is a different issue, and how we define it, of course, is a different issue, but it's got to be in this ordinance.
So Eric, it seems to me after that sequence that, at least at this point, we're back to two questions. Number one is, we needed, we need an opinion with regard to your equal protection question. And then number two, we need further thought with regard to the definition of federal service. And so I think we need the city attorney's advice with regard to those things. At least that's where I am right now. Proceed, Dr. Altman, please.
So moving on to the, we're now on to G in the, in the definitions. Guest in a licensed rental and guest in a dwelling not required to be licensed. So I have two issues with these definitions, one really low level and one more high level. So as written right now, they don't parse, and the words, so right now it says, guest in a licensed rental means...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you? You lost me. So what section are you in now?
Sorry, section seven dash twenty-two, right below the federal service definition. Page two.
On the definitions?
Definitions.
Okay, I'm with you now, thank you.
So right now, it's, the, one of the definitions reads, guest in a licensed rental means, comma, as applied to dwellings required to be licensed for rental purposes, comma, a guest means any person. That second phrase, a guest means, is unnecessary. It, the sentence doesn't parse with that in there. So that should be deleted, and that's true for the second guest definition also. But the more substantive question is that it seems to me that these definitions are actually a policy statement hiding in the definitions section. Because these two terms, guests in a licensed rental and guests in a dwelling not required to be licensed, are used nowhere else in the ordinance. The word guest is, but it's used in contexts that have nothing to do with, with rental issues. They have to do with, with other issues. And so the distinction in those other contexts, the distinction between, as guest is used in those other contexts, the distinction between guests in a licensed rental and guests in a dwelling not required to be licensed, I don't think is relevant. And so this is defining two types of guests as a policy matter, but it's in the definitions. And so I think it's in the wrong place. Does that comment make any sense at all?
You always make sense.
Well, that's not true, but thank you.
And I was just saying that I do think they're in the right place because there are usages of guest, and this is, to clarify that, in a non-rental property, you know, a guest can stay as long as they want. And that was one of the issues that was presented by the proposal one's people. But I also agree that the word means in the first definition that the guest in a licensed rental should be is, not means. And we can take care of that in the future because it should read that, as applied to dwellings required to be licensed for rental purpose, a guest is any person or persons who occupy a room for living or sleeping without payment of rent or other consideration in exchange for the right to occupy that dwelling for no longer than thirty consecutive days or no more than sixty days in a year. So I, I think you're right identifying that word as being inappropriate in that location. Now, you have to see if it, if it doubled up in that second definition.
Yeah, it's the same issue in the other one. So, so let me try again with my conceptual issue. So if I'm a resident and I'm trying to figure out whether I'm allowed to have a guest or not, right? And I'm trying to decide whether there's a time limit, right, on how long, because I've heard that there's a time limit, right, on how long I can have a guest living with me. Where am I going to look for that policy prescription? I'm going to look for something in our ordinance that says, how long can I have a guest stay with me? I'm not going to look in the definitions for a distinction between two types of guest. And I think that was one of the things that led to the confusion starting a year ago, is that people, including me, didn't know where to look for the definition of guest. I didn't know that it was in the definitions. I thought it would be with all the other stuff that says, what are the limitations on what I can do with my house? And that's not where this policy statement is. It's often the definition. So I don't know where I would put it, but I would probably put it closer to the, the parts of the ordinance that talk about when do you need a license and when do you not need a license? Exclusions. Or in a separate article right next to that that says, guests, right, and limitations on stay of guests. And now, if I'm somebody reading through this ordinance, looking for what I can do with my property, then I come across a section that says, oh, look, there's a limitation that may apply to me or may not.
Yeah, I, I understand your question. I, I'm very concerned about not having a definitional section that defines things. And I think guest is something that needs to be defined. I'm not saying that I necessarily agree with this definitional construct here, but I, I think guest needs to be defined, but that's my thought. Go ahead, Eric.
Just a question, I mean, this is along my thinking lines to scare everyone. I immediately start thinking about owner occupied versus parents that own, that may be having a number of folks while it is owned and maybe not subject to license because their daughter lives there, but yet they have additional ghosts, not ghosts, hopefully, guests that are staying over thirty to sixty days or what have you in a given year. And is, do we need to actually have an owner occupied definition? I don't know, I'm just throwing that out. Is that part of, that would be guest in a dwelling not required to be licensed, I believe. But there's a difference between not being required to have a license and actually having those on the deed there, living, owner occupied.
As a policy decision, or as a policy, what we have done is that if there is a house that is owned by the parents, that a daughter is living in it, and she has three guests that do not pay any rent, we have not required them to obtain a license, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah. And so as a policy, I see exactly what you're saying, the way that we police this is that that person would not be required to obtain a rental license.
And it doesn't matter if the owner is present in the home, like occupying the dwelling versus their kids occupying it and not on the deed.
As long as there's no money being, no compensation in kind.
Why wouldn't we require that?
I think we shouldn't.
City managers, got a recommendation.
Well, the definition that we're working with right now goes on to say that they have to be living with the owner or owner's family residing therein.
Or the owner's family, which could still be a, a family member not on the deed.
Assuming that meets the definition of family, yeah. So I think that kind of answers part of your question or part of your query.
Potentially, yeah.
Sorry, let me ask this question to you then. Would you feel more comfortable if this read with the owner or owner's family where the owner resides therein without the payment of, you know, so that the owner has to be living there in order for this exception to apply?
Well, I, listen, this is how I'm approaching this discussion, because I, I know we're waiting for a memo from the city attorney on the case law that we've been hearing about, that I am flagging issues that I think are important to the discussion and that are important to the safety of the community. And then I think when we have a new addition, that staff, you know, taking from these comments tonight, we see another draft, then that's where I see things in writing, I can respond to your question directly.
Yeah, Eric, back to your thing, I, I guess I'm inclined, just for future reference, I'm inclined to keep these definitions in here and then at a later location, be a little more informative about the question that you were raising in terms of, how do I figure this out, kind of thing? Because that, that section could refer back to these too, I think.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So I don't, I don't, I don't see it as that complicated, it's just a draftsmanship thing to me.
Yeah, I, I think that could work, and that, that way the information is located in multiple places, and you would have a pointer to it where you would expect to find it, which is my basic issue.
Yeah. I just think historically, I mean, it just, when I go over this stuff and read the decisions, it's, it's been like, I don't know what the right analogy is, but these definitional constructs in East Lansing have been floating out in the air, you know, for twenty, for thirty years now, really, and I think just, we need just to nail down the definitional constructs, so. Go ahead, Eric, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, not at all. So I'm on to, so continuing definitions, now on page three, I'm on occupy. Occupy means to live, sleep, or have possession of a space in a building. Occupy, so occupy means includes sleeping, but occupiable space, which is the definition immediately before it, doesn't include bedrooms.
Well, there's also a definition for habitable.
Yeah.
And then I... And then I think I heard you mention the word habitable.
Yeah.
Because bedrooms are more defined as habitable in our licensing world anyway. So we wouldn't necessarily call them occupiable, we would call them habitable.
So I have no idea, I'm completely confused by the distinction between occupiable and habitable. And we don't define habitable. It's not in the definitions.
It's in zoning? Did we move it?
Yeah.
I think we moved it to chapter 50.
Yeah, there were some things that we took out of definitions because if you look at the section preceding, or I'm sorry, the first section within definitions, terms defined in other codes, that would be within the International Property Maintenance Code.
International Property Maintenance Code defines it.
So could we put a pointer in here to that?
We do.
For habitable.
Do we?
Yeah.
Where?
Right at the beginning of the terms defined in this, I think, we make a reference, terms defined in other codes, and then we mentioned all the codes in which other terms are.
But we don't mention the word habitable.
Yeah, but that's.
The point is, I didn't know where to look for it, right? So how am I supposed to know that it's in another chap?
So you want, we could list, what you're asking is if we list the terms that would be applicable here that are in other codes.
Yeah, and what we've done now is we've said family is defined in chapter 50 zoning, section 50-6, so we could do the same thing with habitable.
Do you want all of the International Property Maintenance Code definitions?
No, I think just habitable comes up a lot.
Okay.
Right, in this chapter. And, you know, I'm a curious reader, right? But I couldn't find it. And so other people are going to have that same struggle.
Well, it seems to me one of the fixes for that is, I think, I think this is probably going to go back to our subcommittee, but you could write at the start of this, section 7-22, such words as habitable, blank, 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 blank are, have the same definition as in the International Property Code. Including but not limited. So in other words, you don't make it exclusive, but you can point out some of them that might be useful so that somebody could look at this and go, oh, yeah, that one's in that code.
Right. And when I'm looking for that, I'm looking alphabetically. So I'm looking under H in the definitions.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. So it just depends on how many of those things are in that subset.
That was the only one that stuck out for me where I really struggled a little bit.
But can I tell you that I think that a space, you started off with the thing about the space. So to me, a space is like, you know, the height of bed in my living room. It's not a bedroom, but it's a space. So in one of these situations, somebody could be staying in a space like that. Okay, keep rolling.
Okay.
Please.
So let me just return to the idea of occupiable space. So the omission of a bedroom there is not an omission, right? It's not supposed to be in.
Right.
Right, okay, good. Definition of rental unit, still on page three. A structure, a part of a structure used as a home residence or sleeping unit by a single person or a household unit. What's a household unit? Is that a family?
All right. I think that also is referred in Proposal One. You know, I'll take a look at that again, but doesn't he say household? Then there's somewhere it's going to be defined under state law or something.
Well, but I think Eric's point is if we're, we should define household unit.
Unless.
Unless it's otherwise defined someplace else.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then we use that term.
And I think the whole idea here is so a normal person without a law degree, or even with a law degree, can pull this out and look these things up with some modicum of logic in terms of where things would be found. I think that's how we got where we are tonight. So I'm going to beat the drum again. I think definitions are a good thing to have in here. Go ahead, Eric. I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
Unless Steph wanted to reply.
I was just going to say that I think that, unless the city attorney corrects me, it is, household is in Prop. 1. The city shall not restrict in any way relationship of persons living together as a household, doesn't say household unit, household or residing in the home or interfere with the rights of owners to live with persons of their choice as long as such persons are not rent-paying tenants.
But is that why we put that term household unit in rental unit, or was it there before?
I don't think we added that.
Yeah, I think it might have been there.
It might have been there, but I think this rental unit definition is, I think it's consistent with the state definition of rental unit.
But I still don't know what a household unit is. That's my problem.
We can look into that.
Okay.
Well, it's more basic than that. If the charter says household and not household unit, it seems to me we ought to, if we can, define household in this statute, in this ordinance.
Okay, I am on to Article 3 violations.
Just let me, it says in Michigan, a household is defined as all individuals living in a home excluding residents. Don't know what that means. This includes families, couples, and groups of unrelated individuals. The term income-qualified household goes on to other things, but that's the definition of household.
Well, but that's a definition from what?
From state law, which we are now required to consist with.
Which state law?
Michigan state law.
No, what specific state law?
It would be somewhere in R 41401 to 41402. Those are the rules of the state of Michigan.
The rules, Mark, you kept, when you kept reading, it sounded like the rules came from some specific administrative statutory matrix. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
I'm reading from what I was able to pull up in two seconds. You're asking me for something that takes me a little time to research.
Top of page four in section 31, section 31, there's a paragraph one, reinspection. And then there used to be a paragraph two, but now there's not anymore. The two was deleted. So now there's a freestanding paragraph that's unnumbered. And I'm wondering why that numbering was removed.
Oh, following print B, right?
Yeah, below print B. It used to be two, and then upon failure to comply with a corrective order, but now it's just upon failure to comply with a corrective order.
Yeah, I think the committee debated that at the time, as I recall, and more votes to do it this way than not, as I recall.
Well, but now we have a paragraph one. Do we need a paragraph one then at all? Because we only have one and then there's no two. It's minor.
Right.
It doesn't matter. So take it under advisement.
Perhaps not.
Let's move on. Section 7-36, also on page four, access by owner, owner's agent, or operator. No person shall obstruct, interfere with, or impede, I would add, access of, after impede, sorry.
What number are we looking at?
7-36, access by owner, owner's agent, or operator. I would add access of after impede and delete the access after employee. So it reads, no person shall obstruct, interfere with, or impede access of the owner, owner's legal agent, operator, or employee to any part of such structure. Because right now I can't parse it.
Yeah, no, Eric's, I think Eric's correct. I think it's just, I think it's not, it's nonsensical the way it is. I think the phraseology is just reversed. I think the intent here is that under this setup, you can't restrict the owner, owner's agent, broker, or sales representative from having access to their property. And the way it's phrased right now, I think something's gotten discombobulated.
7.36, yeah, 7-36.
7-36, access by owner, owner's agent, or operator.
We didn't make any changes to this language.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it. A lot of my stuff is.
Yeah.
Comments on old stuff that needed some cleaning. 7-56 on page six and 7-57 also on page six. I believe it should be, so one is credentials, the other is notices and orders, should be any city manager's designee. We use the possessive, I think, throughout now. It's minor.
Can I interrupt?
Yep.
So this goes back to something I was talking about before. So in this same article, I'm concerned about section 7-52, the rulemaking authority, and 7-55, the right of entry in terms of the whole process within the power of the city manager. I'm not saying I'm not, could not be in favor of that in the future, but I really need to look at that in the context of the city charter and current Michigan law. Once again, I'm concerned about the city manager being the final arbiter of that rather than perhaps the city council. And the reason I'm concerned about that is ideas of due process.
Well, the rulemaking authority, 7-52, it requires the council to approve.
I understand that, but then the question is, once we approve the rules, then we give a lot of power to the city manager, and I'm not sure we want to do that, so.
That is, I actually originally had a similar question about 755 sub 1, which is, my question was, does this allow somebody to break in?
55, one, what?
7-55 sub 1, the city manager's designee, this is under right of entry. City manager's designee is authorized to enter upon unoccupied licensed premises or for which a license is being requested at all reasonable times to inspect same or to perform any duty imposed by this charter, et cetera. And my question was, can they break in?
No.
No, we don't enter without the owner or legal agent present.
Does it say that?
Not here.
I think going to subsection two, that's where it references if there is any refusal of entry.
But section one doesn't say anything about refusal. It just says, there's the authority.
No, but section two talks about what happens when there is no authority given by the.
Not sure I understand, but that's okay.
All right, you raised a question. We can get advice on that.
Make it clearer, too.
7-60 on page seven, corrective orders. Use of non-habitable or occupiable space or any other violation. I can read that a couple of ways. And one way I can read that is that use of occupiable space is a violation, which doesn't make sense to me.
So add the word non in front of occupiable.
So I'm wondering if that should say non-occupiable. So this is 7-60.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, 60, sorry.
I mean, I think you can do it this way, the way it is, but adding non makes it clear and there's no ambiguity.
Right, unless.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. You want to have the power to regulate occupiable space if there's a violation which endangers the health and safety of tenants or the general public.
I think that's right.
Yeah, I think this, well, I have no problem with this language because of the subsequent language, which I think modifies it or explains it.
And that is the other way to read it. But in proximity to non-habitable, it looks to me like you could read it as use of occupable space as a violation. I'm going to return to the occupiable, non-habitable issue later. But again, point noted. Page 7-61, sub 6, sub A on page eight. My concern about the seven-day notice after service of a corrective order is that it has the potential to create unregulated, an unregulated short-term rental. Because if I rent illegally, for example, and compliance isn't until after seven days, compliance isn't required for seven days, then I have seven days in which I can rent my property without remedy by the city.
Yeah, so we discussed this extensively when that was first brought up, and I think that was, that's a really good point. And I thought in dealing with the working group was that the, if there's a determination of a short-term rental that lasts less than seven days and it's initiated a second time, the first day of violation goes back to the first time that there is a violation, so that we would still be able, if we found that this was in any way lasting in totality, this process of short-term renting a residence, that it would go back to the initial violation date.
Even if there are periods in between where the owner was in compliance?
That's how we interpreted that we would enforce it, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and we think that's defensible?
I believe so, yeah.
I do have a substantive question. My, I assume that this is in response to paragraph four of Proposal One, which requires a seven-day notice.
Yes, yes.
However, that paragraph also unlawfully requires amendment to the zoning code, and there's no severability clause in Proposal One. So are we required to implement an unlawful provision in our charter?
I previously provided, well, we had several closed sessions about how to handle what were deemed to be likely unenforceable or potentially subject to challenge provisions. And I think you made a motion to challenge Proposal One, and it was not passed.
This is a separate question. The question is, are we required to implement an unlawful provision of our charter?
I think we're required to challenge a provision if we don't believe it's lawful.
Or we're required, we're required to?
Well, we're not required to, we would otherwise enforce it.
What specific section are you referring to?
Of the code?
Yes, of what's before us.
What's before us is section 7-61, sub 6, sub A on page eight, at the top of page eight.
Okay, so lead me through that again, will you please? Because I don't quite understand how you got to that question.
Time for the corrective actions required to achieve compliance with a date certain set to determine compliance, which is not less than seven business days after service of the corrective order.
Okay, and is this for rental property?
Yes.
Okay. So going back to where I thought you started, which was the seven days might give somebody the ability to do short-term rentals, the reality is, the ultimate sanction here is if they're found to have violated the rental license, we just, we go through the process to take away the rental license, don't we?
This would be for any property.
Okay, that's why, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah. Exactly.
Okay, so for a rental property, we could take away the rental license, correct?
Or a failure to comply?
Yes, okay.
We could.
Well, they.
Get your tickets.
And so now, ultimately, we could take away the rental license. And so now we're talking about a residential property in which they have violated what?
The failure to get a rental license.
Renting without a license.
Right, okay. And so isn't the ultimate sanction there if they, let's take, what I think is Eric's hypothetical, that they're using it in effect as a short-term rental, isn't the ultimate sanction there is to require, let's see, I got, I'm getting myself twisted, don't we have an ultimate sanction there in terms of charging them in a violation of this housing code?
Yes. So there's no winner for a short-term rental.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going.
Because the seven days says you've got to get a rental license, and they can't do it. do it, so they're going to be in violation after the seven days, and they're going to get nicked for renting without a license. But, the way proposal one is worded, we have to give them a seven-day notice that they need to get a rental license, which they'll get. It won't really help them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not dis, I, I agree with you, Mark. I just think the reality is, I think Eric's honing in on the...
Proposal one, at least in that provision, I think that's, that's true.
Yeah, I'm not interested in going there tonight. But the reality is, I think we have an ultimate sanction here if we get into that situation, Eric, so I guess I'm trying to figure out why we're worried about that seven-day thing or eight-day thing or whatever.
Well, I wanted to make sure that we did have that ultimate sanction.
Okay, all right.
That was, that was the point.
Okay.
The other question, I think I know the answer to this, but if the city needs to take correction, corrective action sooner because a violation affects public health and safety, my understanding is that state law allows us to do that?
Yes, that is absolutely right.
Is that worth spelling out here?
We have it somewhere.
I think it's in another section.
Yeah, I do think that there is a section, I remember we spoke about it.
Yeah, I think it is somewhere, somewhere else also. Yeah, I, I do remember it's, yeah, it's seven dash sixty corrective orders. You don't need a corrective order if it violates, if the violation endangers health and safety?
Yes.
So it's fine? Okay.
So unlawful occupation of a habitable space, we don't get a notice at all.
Mark's, we can't hear you. We can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Mark, whatever you said.
Oh, that was an aside. So what I said was unlawful occupation of a, an inhabitable space would not require a corrective order, so we don't have to give a seven-day notice on something like that.
Section seven dash sixty-two, service of order on owner or legal agent, on page eight. It's, talks about service, so every corrective order and any amended or supplemental order shall be served on the owner or owner's legal agent or other designated responsibility by person of delivery or ordinary mail to the address of the property or to the last known address on file with the city. So, for the owner or owner's legal agent. So that means that we could mail a corrective order to a rental property, but if the owner isn't living there, there's a reasonable chance that that letter is not going to reach the owner.
In practice, we send all of our letters to the legal agent, and tenants are often copied, except for large apartment complexes are not always, tenants aren't always copied, but it, all of our correspondence goes to the legal agent or owner.
And I think that's exactly the right way to do it, but that's not what this reads, as far as I can tell. It seems to give us the option to mail to the address of the property or to something else.
If, if at times we'll get the returned mail from the legal agent, if they change their address and haven't notified us, and then we will send it to, so that may be the provision of why they leave it in there as an option, because we will send it directly to the, to the home.
All right, thank you.
And you're exactly correct. It does give us that alternative, which I want.
Okay, fine. Seven dash sixty-four, extension of time for making repairs, sub-three on page nine. The last sentence of that paragraph says, "The housing commission shall only grant a time extension if the applicant meets one of the conditions of subsection one of this section." I didn't see multiple conditions in subsection one. I only see one condition in subsection one, which is that the extension not endanger public health.
Well, there's also, will comply with the order if allowed with it for additional time, and upon determination that a time extension will not create or perpetuate a situation eminently dangerous to life or limb or basic health, safety, or the general public welfare, granted initial. So there's three items up there.
Fine, but the text in sub-three says it only needs to meet one of the conditions. So that means it could actually be dangerous to life or limb as long as one of the other conditions is met, which doesn't make any sense.
Well, they're stated as ours, so I guess you're right about that.
Well, so it really should read, aren't we really saying that the housing commission shall only grant a time extension if the applicant meets all of the conditions of subsection one of the section?
That's kind of what I'm thinking, yeah.
I'm kind of thinking the same thing, so, unless the city attorney thinks we're not thinking correctly, I would suggest that changed me. I agree with Dr. Altman.
I just want to do a time check. How many more do we have to go?
That's a good question.
Halfway, maybe?
I am at least halfway through.
Where does counsel want to go on this? I mean, I, it, it, do we want to go through this whole process tonight? We have more stuff on the agenda. Do we want to go through Eric's list and then defer to other discussion-only sessions? What do, what do y'all want to do?
I am fine with whatever people want to do. I think these are comments that are probably worth addressing, I guess. I, I'm happy to send them privately to people if that would save time. I am open to anything.
What if Councilman Altman, if you haven't done so already, like, some of your changes are grammatical, and if that could be sent to the work group, those provisions are updated, and then we schedule another time on a discussion-only meeting to, to have, because I do think these are important to have on the record. This has been an important issue for the community, but that is what I would propose.
I, I am completely fine with that.
Well, let's send them to the whole council, let's send them to everybody in the council, please.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm completely fine with that.
And then, did you already provide those to staff?
I have not provided these to staff.
I think staff, as we've seen tonight, can provide explanations for some of, some of it, and it might, might reduce the number of changes that we need to make anyway, so.
And then I would also assume that we all could make all of, any other suggestions we have in writing.
Right.
And address them to the council and to the work group.
So what I will plan to do is send my markup to staff.
Yep.
City attorney and CC, the council.
That's fine. And then...
Does the city manager have something they want, he wants to say?
I think he definitely wants it.
I do, and, and if you don't mind, for clarification, are the items you're going through, are the same ones you've already shared with the working group, or are they new? Because the working group went through
Yep.
many of your recommended changes, some of which we embraced, others we wanted to discuss
Yep.
among the council, to get the council's way in on the item.
The ones that, the key substantive ones, we've hashed out here. There are others that I submitted previously that I'm still puzzled about, but they're lower, lower level, and then there are a few new ones. So I think we're in range where it makes sense for me to send all my stuff to you guys, and then you can address the comments, and then we can have that discussion at another discussion-only meeting.
So, given that, do we want to move to defer this to a subsequent discussion-only meeting?
Do, do we need to defer? Or can we just reschedule this to, to, I mean, because we aren't taking any action on this tonight, anyway?
Yeah, good point, yeah.
I guess my question would be, this is referred to the work group again with any changes, can we set a timeline for our own written comments with regard to this so that we can, we can keep this rolling? I can, I think Tony will confirm that at the, the Charter Review Committee meeting the other night, you know, there was a, a lot of talk about the fact that, you know, it's been six months, and we haven't made the changes yet that are required by proposal one, and there are other changes that were, were made to the charter a long time ago that haven't been made. So we've got this backup of changes that need to be made both to the charter and to our ordinances that, that it's taken a long time to get done. Let me put it that way. So if, if we can set that timeline a little bit quicker than we have been, I think it would be pretty useful. I don't know how staff feels about that, but...
I don't believe there's a discussion-only meeting scheduled for June or July.
We can create one if we have to.
Just putting that in, in the conversation of timeline of...
Okay.
There's one for June.
And we can make it special for this, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Is that the first week of June?
So, can I suggest, let, let me just say this with regard to the velocity of this. I, I appreciate what you're saying, what the Charter Commission's saying, but we're dealing with, in my judgment, thirty years of stuff on these rental hor, ordinances, at least three Michigan decisions, and I, for one, I'm never going to vote for anything unless I'm really pretty certain that I'm not creating another thirty years of confusion. So with all deliberate speed, I guess, is where I would be. So let me suggest that council get their comments to the working group and each other within seven calendar days after we receive from Dr. Altman his list. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure, that'll probably be tomorrow, so.
Okay. Okay, are we done, at least for tonight's purposes, for that item? Everybody okay with moving along?
Well, I want to ask a question about, sort of the next step. Do we need, I mean, if we are going to have a special meeting to address presumably this, the family definition and the chapter six stuff that we'll be looking at when we, when we end our discussion tonight on this, can we put it on, on a special meeting where we can vote on it, but spend the evening making those changes that are necessary in order to, to get that done?
I don't know if I would be willing to do that, because I'm going to probably want another
Copy.
legal read-through after our changes, before we adapt anything.
Okay. So, what do we then want to do about six point three, our discussion about the definition of family? Because I think Eric initially had his conceptualization that we need to tie all three of these things together. Tie might not be the right word. Do, do we want to proceed with the discussion about the family thing, six point three? Ms. Watson saying yes? Okay, let's proceed on six point three, please.
Okay, one, one question then. Do we want to defer the discussion of chapter six? Because I don't think there's going to be a lot of questions with regard to that, anyway.
Well, I think that's pretty much pro forma, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that makes sense to me.
Then we can just spend the rest of our time on the family definition?
Right.
Okay. Do you need a motion on that?
No, I don't need a motion on that, it's a discussion-only meeting. Yes.
So staff would like a little bit of a clarification. So Eric, you are going to send your suggestions within seven days to...
No.
No.
He's going to send his suggestions when he sends his suggestions.
Okay.
And then within seven days after the council members receive his suggestions, we are going to have to react and respond to him, all of us, and you.
And we are going to be doing that by email?
Right.
I mean, what I'm trying to figure out is if we're trying to plan a meeting in the timelines we might be under, because we are, we have a few things.
I, I believe that the working group may want to have a meeting after that process has happened, if that's your question.
Sure, that would be good. I'm just saying, the, I want to know how tight. We, we are, Elise and I, Robert, all have different things happening that first week in June. We will not be able to meet that quick and have something ready like the second week in June.
From my perspective, this takes as long as it takes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.
Everybody is working.
Okay.
Everybody's got stuff. I'm not interested in being pushed along
Okay.
on this, I am not. That's, that's me.
And I agree. I already said what I thought about the process, so. Okay, so does that give you enough guidance?
Yeah.
So, yeah, nobody's going to be telling you tomorrow morning you have to get it all done within four and a half days.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that the, we aren't just responding to Eric's email that you're going to receive. Each member of council may have their own things that they want you to take a look at.
Absolutely correct, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I don't want anything to interrupt your ability to watch the Cornell-Penn State La Crosse semifinal on Saturday.
We'll have to get the exact time of that.
Yeah, that's twelve noon. ESPN Two. Item six point three, discussion about proposed ordinance fifteen forty-five, an amendment to the definition of family in chapter fifty, zoning of the city's code of ordinances.
You want me to...
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Landon Bartley, Principal Planner. Ordinance fifteen forty-five is proposed to amend the definition of family in the zoning ordinance by adding the words foster children, persons living with dwelling unit owner under guardianship, and cousin. This was introduced and referred to the planning commission by council on January seventh. Planning commission held a public hearing on February twenty-sixth, at which time they received comments from one individual. The planning commission considered the amendment again on March twelfth, at which time they once again received public comment from, from three people. The housing commission also hosted a meeting on February sixth. They received public comment at that time and made recommendations generally, generally in support of the amendment as proposed, and that letter is in your packet. Also, the A. Franklin Committee of the Seniors Commission received comments from two individuals about the meeting, at their April meeting on April seventeenth. And then, as you know, the city council hosted a public hearing for this amendment on April twenty-second and received comments from several individuals, as well as this evening, and presumably any future meeting that you discuss this, including, I should say, a, an open house event that we're hosting tomorrow, right in this room, one plan, two plan, red plan, blue plan, in which we could receive feedback about this ordinance and also the comprehensive plan update. So you had asked some questions at your last meeting, and Director Irwin and also Administrator Elise Hodges have responded to those questions in memoranda, one of which is in your packet as well. I think that sort of summarizes the process thus far. I have relatively little to add about the actual content of the ordinance itself, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Questions?
I have comments.
Go ahead.
My easy discussion item is to include the functional family, what it means, and to include the definition of a functional family as issued by the group of people that Patrick Rose works with. And to back it up, first of all, the, these breakdowns of family is, it, it, it sounds like heterosexism, it sounds like nuclear family-type stuff, and, and it's not gender-neutral. And so I, I've brought up my assumptions on why I think these definitions were defined at any point in time, and I've not been corrected on why we even landed there. And again, for me, it's based on segregation and watching who's coming into your house and whether or not you approve of it, even, who's coming into someone else's house, and whether or not you approve of it as if you pay money, you know, to that house. But I reviewed the other examples just to also back up why I'm talking about the functional family piece. It's something that Delta Township does mention, and that was in the paperwork that we received. I want to uplift the part where it talks about, in ours as well as like Meridian Township, about the privileges afforded a member of a family. And, and that right there speaks to the privileges that traditional family structures get, and, and I don't think that that's right anymore in twenty twenty-five. And other ones I saw that I liked the wording of was Ann Arbor's reference to the Fair Housing Act amendment. I'm not sure if that applied to the functional family, but it was very basic. And so then, I'm not agreeing to staff, to me, wasting people's time figuring out... And so then, I'm not agreeing to staff, to me, wasting people's time figuring out how related someone is and all that stuff that, again, for me, is antiquated. And the final thing I want to mention is I am a single individual, and so what family looks like to me, what family chosen looks like to me, might look different for married people, but we must leave space for everyone to create the families that they choose and support the families that they choose. So for me, that might look like my ex-partner's niece or nephew having the ability to move into my home if I need to support them, if they need some type of support, and I will be there for that, like I consider them my family, but not by these laws. And so that's, I thought, my smallest acts, which was that we consider including the definition of functional family as Patrick Rose and his team presented to us.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Yeah, and this is supposed to be a discussion meeting, so, you know, I'd love to, I'd love to hear other people's thoughts. I think that's the energy of it.
Well, I guess I can, I can give you a little history, because I was around when this was done, but, or some of this was done, anyway. The, as far as the definition of family, including a domestic unit, the domestic unit title was chosen because, I want to say, in 1993, the city extended healthcare benefits, and in the contracts, it was called a domestic unit. And so, for the first time, anyway, among our employees, the employee who lived with somebody or a gay couple could, an employee could have healthcare benefits for that individual. And that was challenged by some of our community members, and we decided to put it directly in the definition of family, which is what happened here. And so as defined and as a intent, this was designed to make sure that, I mean, this is before overfall, for instance, which would like clear up the idea of family for two individuals of the same sex or to marry each other. The, and so this was specifically designed for the LGBTQ community, to make sure that they were considered a family in the city of East Lansing. And as far as the definition of family that was contained above, in response to, I'm trying to remember the name of the case, but related to the nuclear family, we expanded the definition so that it no longer referred to a nuclear, what was traditionally called a nuclear family. Because if memory serves me right, the township case, the Danolfo case, looked at also the fact that they had a much more strict ordinance that said, basically, if you're not a family, you can't live in this neighborhood. So that got blown out. We never had that, but we wanted to expand this. So that's why you see it look, you know, extend to sister, grandfather, grandmother. Had we kept thinking about it, we would have had niece and nephew in there, because so many people in the community had a niece or nephew living with them who were attending, you know, Michigan State University. The idea of foster children was actually brought to us by Patrick last year of adding that, and the guardianship was raised at one of the Housing Commission meetings, you may have been there that night. And so the attempt here is to broaden it. And I think, you know, from my standpoint, the defect in what we wanted to accomplish here is in the third line, where it says shall be limited to. Because if we, for instance, simply said something like includes but is not limited to, we would include every type of relationship that's familial in nature as being something that is permitted without a license. And that was the idea here. So, you know, I think there can be an amendment to this that broadens it. I know George mentioned at one time, "consequency" as a potential word that could be included in there. Personally, you know, I think a lot of people have trouble pronouncing that, number one, but number two, that is pure legalese, and I think for most people in our community or anywhere else, when they read that word, are going, what the hell does that mean? So I like the idea of actually laying the relationships out specifically in an ordinance so people can look at it one way at one time, and they can, you know, read through that and decide whether, you know, their nephew Charlie can live with them, and as long as he's not paying rent, they don't need any rental license. So that's why it's written the way it is. And that's true for the domestic unit. I'm not saying that it couldn't be improved in some way, but it has stood the test of time, and frankly, and I think Tony will confirm this, this definition was challenged under all the case law that Patrick has brought up, and our Court of Appeals determined that it was not in violation of any of those cases.
Thanks, Mark. And I see you, Mayor Potem, I just wanted to just respond really quickly. We've talked before about the law being behind what's right and what's happening with the times. And just again, when you decide to be divorced as an older person, or when you don't have your partner anymore, that doesn't mean you have to enter into these second and third marriages anymore, but it doesn't mean that the type of relationships that I have and the type of partnerships that I have, they should be able to fit into this. Like, it's not your normal family growing up, it's something different. Like, I've got friends who are sole survivors of their family now at our ages, and so where's the space for that type of acknowledgement? And I think it's in the functional family. We'd be able to fall into that if that was a part of these definitions.
It is part of the definition.
Or their actual definition of a functional family, if that was moved into the definitions of family.
Even if we didn't change the name, a domestic unit was referred to specifically?
If, and I'd have to see what you're saying, but I like their definition of functional family, because a domestic unit still seems to be about a two-person partnership, not about something that I might have with a partner who might have, want someone else to move in, and I want someone else to move in, and we're still a functional family, but not by, not because we're together as a same-sex couple, or we don't meet the family definition.
Okay, that, let me just point out that it says domestic units shall mean a collective number of individuals. So it is designed to be, if include two people, but it's designed to encompass any number of people that might be in that situation.
Thank you.
Carrie, did you have something?
I just had a question, picking up on where Councilperson Watson mentioned. One is, can someone articulate the differences between the Fair Housing Act amendments of 1988 and then what we have drafted in our recommendation outside of the exclusions of sorority, fraternity, et cetera? That would be a question of mine, because I'm, my colleagues hear this frequently, I'm simpler. Why recreate the real if something has been indicated could offer, get council support? And it's already in federal law, plus obviously specific exclusions that we face as a university committee or community.
All right, so you want an opinion with regard to that?
Yes.
Okay. I have another question. So I did go back and read the cases, the three state cases, as I understand them. And in Stegeman versus the City of Ann Arbor, there is quoted a definition of, quote, "functional family," end quote, which is in addition to other categories in Ann Arbor. And so my question for written research to us is, is there any reason that we wouldn't just add to these definitions that you have in this proposal, a definition of functional family? And then I guess my second question on that is, under the Ann Arbor setup, which I don't think has been overturned, it would be interesting, I think somebody did some research, I think Landon, you gave us some research on some of the other cities, the definitions, or somebody did. But you see, we have this set up where one category is a family, at least as I understand it, if you are in that definition of construct, you don't have to prove to anybody you're a family. And then under the other construct, the domestic unit, at some point, you have to prove to somebody that you're a domestic unit. And so I'm curious about the Ann Arbor situation in terms of the definition of functional family, whether in that statutory matrix, there was a requirement that somebody had to demonstrate or prove to somebody that they were a, quote, "functional family," end quote. And then the second question, which, again, given the last 30 years of history, seems, concerns me, is the question of how these determinations are made. I do think, I don't agree with a lot of what people have told us were the issues, but I am curious as to what the due process matrix would be under the domestic unit category in terms of how that would be done. And maybe staff can correct me, but I, my sense of that is, that's been kind of hit and miss, and there's no explicit criteria set up. Am I barking up the wrong tree there, or is that kind of correct? Or are there even any written decisions in terms of people being denied domestic unit or granted domestic unit that you're aware of?
Yeah, there are, I found in our files where past staff personnel have issued letters to people that they spoke to that wanted to be considered as a domestic unit. I don't have firsthand information about these.
Right.
But they're in our records.
Okay, and under the current process, is there an appeal of that decision to the city council or the city manager?
Not that I am aware of that we've ever had.
I'm concerned about that, which also segues back to my concerns about the purported power of the city manager under the last ordinance we were looking at. But I would like some legal advice in a written form in terms of what due process would require under current state law and to the extent applicable federal law with regard to due process on a decision about a domestic unit. And then while I've already riffed on functional family, I'd like to find out how that would work on functional family, or even whether it would be necessary. So I have more questions on this stuff, and I, again, it's, I think like Dr. Altman said before, I want to, personally, I want to take enough time to make sure I kind of get all this and take everybody's thoughts into consideration.
Yeah, can I follow up on your question?
Please.
The, because I want to ask you this. So in those circumstances, obviously, you would know from the records that we still have here, but how would you, how would somebody have, if somebody found a situation where they claimed that it really wasn't a domestic unit, would you write a, wouldn't they write a ticket against that person?
So you're saying someone came and talked to staff about being a domestic unit, but then later we found out someone else said, no, they're not, and is that what you're asking?
Well, I wasn't clear on what you were relating there. I assumed that an employee of the city challenged the idea that somebody who was already living in a domestic unit was actually living in a domestic unit, and ultimately found that they were not a domestic unit.
Yeah, that's a different question than I was asking.
Okay.
What I was questioning, and that's a good inquiry, don't get me wrong, but what I was asking is, in terms of the process where somebody actually comes and says, I'm a domestic unit, or I'm a functional family, will you approve this? And I want to know what the process has been and is, because I suspect the process has been kind of hit and miss. Now, Mark is going at the other end of that, which is, somebody goes ahead, doesn't get "authorization," quote unquote, and then staff writes a ticket. And so I think that's where you were headed in terms of your question.
I assumed that was part of that.
I'm not familiar with that happening.
So that hasn't happened, okay.
I mean.
But that person would have.
Over all the years.
An appeal, because they would have to be, they could challenge that in court, correct?
Well, yeah, once they got ticketed, yeah.
So, okay, that has a process. Here's my next, my other question, real quickly on George's point. If we were to, paragraph five of the family definition is the one where we say, a domestic unit shall have the burden of proof. We don't have any similar requirement for a family defined under paragraph one, correct?
That is correct. We were pulling the prior versions of the ordinance, and we just got some today. And ordinance 921 is the predecessor that was effective in 1998, and it was broken into two sections, and both of them, family and then domestic unit, both had a paragraph stating, "Anyone seeking the rights and privileges afforded a member of a family by this code shall have the burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence of their family relationship." And then for domestic unit, "Any person seeking the rights and privileges afforded a domestic unit by this ordinance shall have the burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence of each of the elements of a domestic unit." So that was previously in the ordinance, and we're trying to figure out the subsequent modification to it that changed this definition.
But there was a subsequent modification, correct? Our current ordinance.
It currently does not have, you are correct, the way that you stated how it is currently set up.
But this version does have it. Because paragraph two says, "Anyone seeking the rights and privileges afforded a member of a family by this code shall have the burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence of the family relationship." So we aren't treating, in this version anyway, that's in front of us right now, "family" in paragraph one, different than "family" in paragraph three.
Family in paragraph two is, does have the same burden, you are correct, as domestic unit in paragraph five.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't have that type of an issue out there.
Okay, other discussion or questions for staff? Carrie?
I just want to make a quick recommendation that's more broad than just this issue to the city manager, that, you know, as we have found several issues in process in various departments that have been either because we've always done it, or because records date so long ago. My recommendation would be anytime an employee leaves, there is an exit memo that also highlights top-line changes in policy or significant to their programs, that you then can have a handbook for the next staff that comes in. Because I continually am blown away by this.
Couple of questions.
Yes, sir. For my part. So my understanding, so I didn't read Stegeman, but I did read Citizens for Fair Housing, and I read Danolfo. And Citizens for Fair Housing was where our definition of family that's on the books right now was litigated. right now was litigated, and both with respect to constitutional issues, which I'm hearing about, and also the city charter issue about the definition of family. And the court upheld our, our definition. So my question for the city attorney is, has there been any subsequent litigation that has affected our definition of family?
No, I don't believe there has been, and I think you're exactly correct. So the cases that were referenced today were by members of the public, were more of the East Cleveland, which is a 1977 case, and Delta Charter Township v. Danolfo, which is a 1984 case, and Stegman v. Ann Arbor, which is a 1995 case. Our ordinance was amended subsequent to that, that was the one that I just referenced, was effective in 1998. It was challenged, and in 2001, so well after those opinions, the Court of Appeals, that was in Citizens for Fair Housing v. East Lansing, the Court of Appeals determined that our ordinance was constitutional, and in doing so analyzed, specifically analyzed, our ordinance against all three of those cases. All three of those cases are in the Citizens for Fair Housing opinion. And the court specifically did also determine that our reference to a domestic unit met the, and it quoted it, functional family obligation of Danolfo. And so it determined that those are, two are essentially one and the same, just by a different name.
Yep, that was my understanding, and I want to actually read from the Citizens for Fair Housing decision. I think this is probably the sixth or seventh time I've read our definition of domestic unit into the record, so, you know, more is better. Individual, so this is our definition of domestic unit, which was taken as equivalent to a functional family in that Citizens for Fair Housing. And the decision quotes, "Individuals whose relationship is regular and permanent, domestic, or has a demonstrable and recognizable bond, where each party is responsible for the other and all are living as a single housekeeping unit." Okay, that is in our ordinance already. I just wanted to make that point again. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Team Prop 1 seems prepared and ready to go to court, so I'm not sure, I mean, I know it's held, but then Prop 1 passed, and I feel like we're under different circumstances. But I was questioning the subjectivity of domestic unit, and so where I'm going with this is, I think I would take out domestic unit and replace it with functional family. And I asked Google Gemini, in case I was off, and there's subjectivity in that definition of what a domestic unit is, and it shouldn't be subjective. It should be clear. It shouldn't be based on staff feeling like it's, it's regular, or that there's a recognizable bond. Those are subjective words that we wouldn't have to think about if we did simply replace it with the definition of functional families. And I beg to differ that even couples and married people who get the benefit of being a family have arranged cooking all the time, or that they can have a partner who stays elsewhere for such and such period of time, and like, it's okay. But then if it's someone like me that doesn't have that legal bond, then it's problematic, my lifestyle, and I don't agree with that. And just again, I feel like the definition of functional family covers my concerns in, including like the type of speakers that came up, another person who was an older person that talked about the look of some people that might move in with her, and that should be okay. That's my.
So you don't think the current definition of domestic unit?
Correct. I don't, I think it's subjective.
Protects your categorization of things?
Right, it's subjective, and, yeah.
And you feel the definition of functional family that's been offered by people who apparently, according to you, have made it clear they're ready to sue the city, you believe their definition of functional family is not subjective, but is totally objective?
Let me, I'll look at it one time.
You don't have to answer it right now, I'm just curious for future reference.
I would say yes, yes. I didn't feel that sense of subjectivity, and I felt covered from some of my lifestyle and lifestyles that have been reported that aren't covered, but are pure, beautiful relationships and chosen families.
Okay. And I would have another question for staff. If it's at all possible, could you itemize for us, in the last 10 years, how many times the city has attempted to enforce what it considers as a violation of the domestic unit definitional construct? Do you understand my question? I'd like to know if we've actually.
Expand on that, please.
I would just want to know if we've ticketed people in the last 10 years for a violation of a rental housing ordinance because we didn't feel they were a domestic unit.
Ah, thank you.
Does that make it clear enough?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, anything else for tonight? Thank you, staff, for all the hard work you've done, for you guys and the staff that's already left. Thank you, counsel, for thinking through all this stuff. Thank you, Dr. Altman, for going through all that stuff. It's, it's much appreciated, and you raised very good questions, and I'll be looking forward to the rest of your list, too, so. Anything else for tonight? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Altman, seconded by?
Second.
Watson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion to adjourn passes unanimously.